Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is December 16th, 2015. We're holding our board meeting at 42 West Madison Street. I'm Frank Clark, and on behalf of our fellow board members, I want to say thank you for coming today. During today's meetings, we will have sessions of honor and excellence. We'll get our CEO report, and of course, we'll go into public participation, followed by executive session, and then we will come out and start voting on those issues before us. As always, I want to remind everyone that when you have your opportunity to speak, we ask for professionalism and courtesy. It also allows the process to move at a good pace and allows everyone who has something to say to say what they have come to tell us. And with that, I would turn it back to the Madam Secretary. Please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our regular meeting of Wednesday, December 16th, 2015, is called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Furlong?
Present.
Member Jordan Turner?
Present.
Vice President Reese?
Here.
Dr. Hines?
Here.
Member Ward?
Present.
Father Garanzini?
Present.
President Clark?
Here.
Seven members present. There is a quorum. I would also like to recognize Forrest Claypool, our Chief Executive Officer, Ronald Marmar, our General Counsel, and Dr. Janice Jackson, our Chief Education Officer. And I would also like to recognize Cynthia Rodriguez, our Honorary Student Board Member, and Ariel Gomez, our Shadow Student this month. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make an announcement that I believe most of you already know, but some of you may not. This is Vice President Jesse Ruiz's last meeting. I think you've seen this either in the newspaper or on the radio. The mayor has recommended that Jesse become President of the Chicago Park District, another leadership role in his very, very outstanding contribution and service to the city of Chicago. And on behalf of the board, we have a resolution that we want to read recognizing Jesse's outstanding contribution to the Chicago Board of Education and CPS. We've asked Dr. Hines to read the resolution. She and Jesse are the longest-serving members on this board, and the honor of reading the resolution we have given to Dr. Hines.
And I want to thank you for that honor. Resolution honoring Jesse Ruiz, Vice President of Chicago Board of Education. Whereas after more than four years of distinguished service as Vice President of the Chicago Board of Education, Jesse H. Ruiz will be appointed to the Board of Commissioners of the Chicago Park District and recommended by the Honorable Mayor of Chicago, Rahm Emanuel, to be their president. And whereas Jesse H. Ruiz was appointed to serve as a member of the Chicago Board of Education on May 27, 2011, by the Honorable Mayor of Chicago, Rahm Emanuel. And whereas in June 2011, he was elected to the position of Vice President of the Chicago Board of Education by his fellow board members, and since then has been re-elected to serve in that capacity. And whereas Jesse H. Ruiz and his fellow board members were responsible for the governance and organizational and financial oversight of Chicago Public Schools. And whereas Jesse H. Ruiz worked towards a substantial agenda for change to address the district's significant financial challenges while continuing to ensure accountability and provide a world-class education that prepared Chicago Public School students for success in college and career. Whereas during his tenure, the board has adopted measures to improve student health and wellness, increase students' access to college preparatory programs through international baccalaureate programs, science, technology, engineering, and math, advanced placement, dual-language credit programs, and student access to arts programming. And whereas Jesse H. Ruiz also served as the interim Chief Executive Officer from April 22, 2015, to July 26, 2015. During his tenure as interim Chief Executive Officer, he initiated a full audit of all schools in the district to ensure that Title III funds are being utilized to provide every English-language learner student the required educational services. And whereas Jesse H. Ruiz has previously served on the U.S. Department of Education Equity and Excellence Commission as Chairman of the Illinois State Board of Education and the Chicago Public Schools Desegregation Monitoring Commission. And whereas Jesse H. Ruiz served on the board without compensation, devoting many hours of his time to Chicago Public Schools and to the children of Chicago. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Board of Education of the city of Chicago, this 16th day of December, 2015, do hereby extend to Jesse H. Ruiz our gratitude for his leadership and his commitment to the Chicago Board of Education and for his many contributions to the education welfare and development of the children of Chicago, and offer him our best wishes for his future endeavors.
DSEG Monitoring Commission, ISB Board, Equity and Excellence Commission, ALEO Education Task Force, this board, and it's my dad and my mom. My dad, who came here as a baracero, that means a migrant farmworker. And watching the debates last night, I'm always reminded that there was a time when the U.S. government actually went to Mexico and recruited people to come and work here, like my dad in 1943. And he picked crops, and he always had a great memory, even though he was 96 when he passed away. Wheat barley and oats in Oregon, sugar beets in Utah, potatoes and onions in Idaho, tomatoes and asparagus in Wisconsin, and of course, corn in Illinois. And he would always remember that, and I'd ask him, you know, "How is it you remember that?" And he'd very look at me sternly and say, "If you'd done that bat-breaking work in the sun all that time for four years, you would never forget a minute of it." And he reminded me, "That's why he came to this country, and that's why he sacrificed like that so that I could get an education he couldn't get." He only got to go to the third grade in Mexico. And so that's what I thought, "Well, what am I going to do with my time?" Well, I got, you know, went to law school and, you know, had the opportunity to have great law professors like Barack Obama and Elena King and Judge Posner, and meet my wife, and then what do I do with that? Well, I thought serving on public education bodies would be the best thing I could do to repay my parents. Could never repay them with any amount of money, but I could repay them by paying it forward and helping other children get an education like they sacrificed and worked hard for me to get. So that's what I've tried to do. I hope I'd, you know, nailed that goal a little bit here and there, and I'm going to continue to do it whether I serve on school boards or not. And again, I still, even though he's gone now for three years, Mom's still here, and I remember she always reminded me, she was a straight-A student in high school in Mexico, and I still remember, you know, spending what seemed like three hours to get through a first Dr. Seuss book, and imparting upon me to be a strong reader, and me crying, lying in her bedroom with her in bed and going through that book, and like, that's what parents do. That's what parents do. She taught me that. She was indeed my first teacher. And so to honor their sacrifices and an hour of them, I've done this for the past almost 17 years and will continue to do so. Thanks, all of you, for the opportunity to do it with you, and to all of you who come here every month and give a lot of your time and effort. We're all partners in this. We've got some challenges ahead, but if we keep our eye on what matters most, and that's the children of CPS, we won't fail. If we get over our differences, focus on them, and continue to work together. So thank you for the honor and privilege to have worked with you all here.
Thank you, Jesse. If any board member has a comment that they want to make, please do so.
Yes, you know I would. Not what I read about you, Jesse, I didn't know all that. But I just want to say it's been a pleasure, you know, honestly, to have worked with you, and I'm going to truly miss you because you kept me honest. I learned so much from you, and also you knowing the law, that always helped me. But just because you're not sitting here don't mean I won't call you. And we will continue to go to lunch. So I want to wish you and your family...
I may lob it in an email here and there and out as well.
So I just want to say it's been a pleasure, and I know I will truly, truly miss you and your honesty and your dedication to the children of Chicago.
Thank you likewise.
So I'll say in the short time that I've been on the board, I have been truly inspired by your commitment and leadership and rigor that you bring to this role, and it's something that most people here don't get a chance to see, all that goes into being a board member, the level of rigor before meetings, during meetings, and after meetings. And you've really elevated us as a board in that way, I do believe. And so making sure that we have information to make correct and honest decisions for the benefit of Chicago Public School students. And so I value that and your leadership, and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thanks.
I'd also like to say that sadly, you know, I have only overlapped with you very briefly at ISB, and now very briefly at the Board of Education CPS. And your impact has always been greatly felt by me and by the rest of us as well. You know, thank you for your leadership and the transition. It's meant a great deal. And I know it's without hesitation and great enthusiasm that you're going to go on to the Park District and serve them as well as you have served us. Look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you, Gail.
I would just like to add, I'm also very sorry that it's only been a few months that we've overlapped, but one thing the resolution does not capture, which is that you are a tenacious fighter.
Sometimes known as stubborn.
The kind of work we do requires people to be tenacious fighters for the improvement of all that we do, especially here in the schools. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Father. Okay.
Yep, just going to talk about it in my remarks, but since it's here. Jesse, I just, again, I wanted to thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you. Your educational accomplishments and your devotion to kids all these years in education, bringing your rigor, as was discussed, your lawyerly skills and your ability to, you know, basically ensure that the administration of this district is always in the best interest of the kids has been exemplary. And we've talked about your educational accomplishments, so I won't go through that, but I just want to add that I think that the next step in your journey to lead an important institution in our city is absolutely consistent with everything you've done to date, and especially as, obviously, it's all about kids. And the education of kids is important, but so are the opportunities to keep those kids off the street, to give them positive mentors, to give them options to be healthy. And those things are critically important in our city, especially at a time like now when we have gang violence and all kinds of other issues in certain communities. And again, also your work on behalf of kids who are learning English as a second language. The parks, for 100 years, have been important for all kinds of reasons. They're the lungs of the city, they provide recreational opportunities, but they've been most important of all to the immigrant groups that have come in waves, decade after decade. And who those immigrant groups are has changed over time, from Irish to the Italians, to Mexicans and others, but it's always been, the parks have always been the affordable venue for families to be able to escape the concrete of the city, to flourish with their families, and also for those kids to get access to programs and positive activities to avoid the sirens along the street. But those, the parks are always important, but they're particularly important to our immigrant groups. And I think that is another dimension that I think makes this absolutely consistent with all your work, and I wish you well. I think you're going to have a lot of fun over there.
Thank you. As probably one of the few Chicagoans who knows that so well, I appreciate that. Well, just one closing comment. Jesse and I have worked together for well over a decade to fundraise in efforts, to the Commonwealth Edison Board of Directors, to the Chicago Community Trust, and here at the Chicago Board of Education. I'll make a bold prediction, its leadership will only continue to expand. Jesse, thank you so very much. Okay, today we have a new Shadow Student with us. Cynthia, would you please introduce Ariel Gomez?
Thank you, President Clark. Today we have Ariel Gomez joining us, a senior from Chicago High School for Agricultural Sciences. Ariel is a member of the National Honor Society, Minorities in Agriculture, National Resources and Related Sciences, and the Future Farmers of America Organization. Ariel will now share her remarks.
Good morning, everyone. Hello. My name is Ariel Gomez, and I'm a senior at Chicago High School for Agricultural Sciences. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I am also a member of the CEO of Student Advisory Council. This year, the council started off strong in our work. We developed a survey that was given to students and staff at CPS schools to help identify key areas of opportunity. From the survey, we've made recommendations on how we can improve the learning. I'm committed to the work that the CEO of Student Advisory Council provides on behalf of all the Chicago Public students. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, and welcome. And now Dr. Jackson will proceed with the honoring excellence segment.
Good morning, President Clark and board members. As you know, we begin every board meeting by recognizing the accomplishments of our schools. And today, it brings me great pleasure to acknowledge an amazing accomplishment in that we are celebrating the Wildcats of Phillips Career Academy, who are now entering the room. Not only are they champions, but they are history makers. The gentleman before you, led by the coaches and Principal Sullivan, were the first-ever football team to win a championship for Chicago Public Schools in our entire history, and I think that deserves a big round of applause. I don't have to tell you how amazing it is to accomplish something so great, but as we offer them that round of applause, the thing that I really want to acknowledge here today is just the remarkable change that has happened at Phillips High School in general. Prior to them winning this championship, I had an opportunity to visit the school at the request of the principal earlier this year. And I have to tell you that instructionally and from a school spirit standpoint, Phillips defies everything that people say about schools on the South Side of Chicago. I left that day impressed with Mr. Sullivan, who was a beloved teacher, and decided to take on the role of being principal at the request of his staff, but also the dedication of the coaches, the teachers, their partners at AUSL, who have really put in the hard work. And it's not just about what we do from 8:00 a.m. to 3:30. They put in hard work that goes well beyond the regular school day. And this accomplishment really speaks to that. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over for Principal Sullivan or his designee to make remarks. But I just have to say, on behalf of Chicago Public Schools, it makes me so proud that you are here representing our district and representing the South Side of Chicago. Bravo.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson, for those awesome words. I would like to thank the board for this tremendous honor today. And I think when you see, when you look at these young men and the accomplishment that they have made, it shows that hard work gets rewarded. And the way that they carried themselves throughout the entire season, an undefeated season of 14-0. And I don't know if anybody's a football fan. And to throw one more stat out there, we outscored our opponents 600 to 90. Last thing, we only trailed by seven twice the entire season. I think what I have to applaud, and I know people have certain feelings about the media in here, and so do I, but I think this time, they got it right. Every story that was done in the media about this team mentioned the academics.
Yeah.
And what we are doing at Phillips is we are making college and career-ready young men and women on a daily basis. And the class of 2016, of which we have 19 seniors right here, we finished last year with 5.4 million in scholarship offers. And right now, as I talk to you, we have 6.6 million in scholarship offers so far this year. And I just, again, I want to thank everybody, but this does not happen without the dedication, obviously, of our young men, but with our coaching staff. And Coach McAlister has been there with me since the turnaround in 2010, and the example that he shows for these young men to follow, and it is absolutely amazing. They go to school, they have their hour study hall after school, then they get their pads, then they walk three-quarters of a mile down to Mandrake Park to practice, then they walk back, then they get on a couple buses, a couple trains, to go back home, to get up and do it all over again. And they do not play, they do not practice unless they are academically eligible, and he sticks to that. So I'd like to turn it over to Coach McAlister at this point. Thank you very much, everybody. I just want to start by thanking the board for having us today. We appreciate the recognition and the young men in here. There's a lot of different stories and things they could talk about, but I think the biggest thing, and we preach it, is family within this, within our team, our program, and our school. And the group of young men before you have accomplished history, and they've done something that's never been done before. And they've done it all while being shorthanded. The schools in the suburbs, Catholic schools, have resources that we don't have. And it's a shame that we don't, but they didn't let that be an excuse. They use that as their motivation to achieve something, having less but getting more. And it's a testament to their willpower and their character. And it's an absolute pleasure to coach this group of young men. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to turn it over to CEO Claypool, who has a few words for you. But before I do that, I have to tell a joke that I told privately. I don't even know if you noticed Forrest, but when I came back to the office, I told everybody I've never seen Forrest that excited. He was so happy at the event, so I would be remiss if we didn't give him an opportunity to just talk about why this is so important and how proud you've made all of us. CEO Claypool.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, Janice. Yeah, it was the best time, best moment in the time I've been here, which was really, the rally was fantastic, and the school spirit was remarkable, and just the story itself is so inspiring, and all of you. And not just because you crushed everyone you played against, including, I think, the championship game was 51 to 7, is that right? Yeah. And that's playing the other best team in the state, right? So that tells you a lot. But it's also because you've committed yourselves to academics and to building a future and a life beyond football, although some, a lot, the number of you I know are going to go on and continue to play football. But I think that's the extraordinary story here, and the rise of Phillips, and this huge number of scholarship offers that's growing every year. And, you know, Mike Coldike gave a very emotional speech at the rally, and what he really was inspired by was the fact that when you guys, like you said, when you break huddle, it's not Phillips or some other slogan like we hear at other schools, it's family. And the family that you all are, you support each other, you got everybody's backs. They're your brothers, and that means a lot. It means a lot not just in football, but when you go off the football field, when you're in the community, when you're running into adversity, wherever that is, you've got brothers, you've got family. And that is really inspiring. And so we congratulate you, we appreciate you coming down. We are honored to honor you. You make, you are a great, great story for the Chicago Public Schools in multiple ways, and we've seen that throughout the year. So congratulations to you and good luck as you translate your success on the field into success in college and success in life. Thank you.
All right. Are you going to speak?
Oh. All right. I just wanted to let y'all know that we appreciate all the support and everything that's been shown throughout our fans, family, Board of Education, everybody. It's good to know that somebody takes time out of their day to acknowledge us and the accomplishments that we have, you know, aside from us and our city. It's always good to know that we got an influence on the city. And just, I just wanted to say thank you. Glad to bring one to the city.
Tell us your name and your role.
I'm Robert Watts. I'm a senior at Phillips Academy. I play defensive end, defensive tackle.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Armani Jones. I'm a senior, and I play middle linebacker. I just want to say thank you, guys, for the recognition that you guys are giving us. Like, we don't get the publicity that we need, that we desire to give. So it's really exciting to get the recognition that we are having now. And I'm honored to be here, just to be you guys' guest. So thank you.
Very welcome. Do any board members?
Let me just say, as President of the board, speaking on behalf of the entire board, and some of them may wish to speak on their own behalf, collectively, this group, this team, this family represents everything I truly believe in. Young men, in this case, who give their best academically, who know the value of education, who listen to people who are trying to make their lives better, who believe in teamwork, and they collectively have been able to do something perhaps individually would be much more difficult to do. You've accomplished so much more than you might fully appreciate as you stand here. You should be proud of yourselves, I'm sure you are, not just for what your team has accomplished, which is extraordinary, but for what you represent. You make us all very proud. Thank you.
President Clark, if I may say something, I proudly served on the AUSL Family Board for several years, and I saw Phillips begin. And I just want to thank all of you gentlemen for, you know, really bringing a new meaning to the word turnaround, and in so many ways, and to the coaches and the principal as well. Thank you so much.
No problem. We try our best.
I'd just like to add my congratulations, and you actually, I serve as, well, I did serve as the CPS representative on the Illinois Association of School Boards. And one of the things that we get is a report from the Illinois High School Association. So at that weekend when the board was meeting at the Hyatt, school board members, every school board member from across the state was there, thousands and thousands. I got a lot of comments of folks coming up because Phillips was, in this, last year's annual report, when you guys had just made, I don't know who number nine is, if you're still on the team. Nice picture. Had you seen this before? All right, this is yours. You guys are featured in the Illinois High School Association's annual report, and everybody was coming up to me very excited. And this is folks from across the state, so you're better known than you think. And it was very, I took a lot of pride in that, I have no reason to, other than I was on this board, but I took a lot of pride on your behalf, that folks from across the state, frankly, folks from schools that are a lot less diverse than yours, were very proud of you all too. And so you did a great thing for yourselves, for your school, and for our city. And for me, that weekend... So, and for me, that weekend where I could walk around the Hyatt and puff my chest out a little bit, and that was before you guys had clinched it, that, that everybody was talking about Phillips, and they know you across the state, and now they know you across the country. And so, thank you for that.
So, I'll just, I just want to say one thing, there's a moment of pride whenever I hear the name Phillips. So, I hear stories, my mom and dad went to Phillips, and it was a very different place than it is right now, and so you all are a part of that turnaround, that new generation of leaders that we are so proud of, not only for this win, but for what you will do next. I hope that you take this pride and this accomplishment, and you apply it to whatever it is that you choose to do post-high school, and we believe in you, we support you, and again, congratulations.
And I just want to say, as a former teacher and a principal, to just see you, to see your faces, you make me proud. Am I surprised? No. No. Whenever given a chance to excel, we always excel. I'm not surprised. Congratulations, keep on representing, and I look forward to seeing the rest of you back here next year.
Okay.
Thank you so very much.
All right, we were able to successfully get you in here, which was no easy feat, so now we're going to see if we can get you out of here as smoothly as possible, so you can go off and continue your celebration, the celebration that we have planned for you today. Thank you again, and congratulations. Okay. Right now, I'd like to introduce some of our musicians from Lincoln Park High School. You probably heard them singing as you came into the meeting today. We also had a jazz band playing in the lobby. I want to turn it over now, and please give a warm welcome to the Lincoln Park High School Choir.
We are the Lincoln Park High School Chamber Singers. We'll be singing two showcase pieces for you today, an arrangement of The Beatles, "I Will," followed by "My Soul's Been Anchored in the Lord."
Oh, God, yeah.
In the Lord. In the Lord. My soul's been anchored. In the Lord. My soul's been anchored. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. In the Lord. In the Lord. My soul's been anchored, anchored in the Lord. In the Lord. In the Lord. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. My Lord, my soul's been anchored in the Lord. Good Lord, my soul's been anchored in the Lord. Before I stay in hell one day. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. I sing and pray myself away. My soul's been anchored. My soul's been anchored. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. In the Lord. In the Lord. My soul's been anchored, anchored in the Lord. In the Lord. In the Lord. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. My Lord, my soul's been anchored in the Lord. Good Lord, my soul's been anchored in the Lord. Go and shout and pray and bless them. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. Until I reach the mountain top. My soul's been anchored. My soul's been anchored. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. In the Lord. In the Lord. My soul's been anchored, anchored in the Lord. In the Lord. In the Lord. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. My Lord, my soul's been anchored in the Lord. Good Lord, my soul's been anchored in the Lord. Do you love Him? Oh, yes. Do you love Him? Hallelujah. Do you love Him? Oh, yes. God Almighty. Are you anchored? Are you anchored? Oh, yes. Yes, I am. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. Yes. Will you serve Him? Will you serve Him? Oh, yes. Will you serve Him? Hallelujah. Will you serve Him? Oh, yes. God Almighty. Are you anchored? Are you anchored? Oh, yes. Yes, I am. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. Hallelujah. Will you praise Him? Will you praise Him? Oh, yes. Will you praise Him? Hallelujah. Will you praise Him? Oh, yes. God Almighty. Are you anchored? Yes, I'm anchored. Lord, I'm anchored. Oh, yes. Lord, I love you. Oh, yes. Yes, I serve you. Oh, yes. Lord, I praise you. Oh, yes. Hallelujah. My soul's been anchored in the Lord. God Almighty, my been anchored. Anchored in the Lord.
Wow. Just look at everybody's face, that was amazing. Thank you. I want to personally thank the choir director, Tim Cooper, and also the jazz band director, Phil Castleberry, for going above and beyond. I mean, their talent is exceptional, but their training is apparent, so thank you for your hard work. Bravo. Mr. President, that concludes the honoring excellence portion.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Now, let's proceed with the business portion of our meeting, and President, CEO Claypool will give the CEO report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to just take a moment to acknowledge two more individuals today who have been a critical part of success here at CPS. Lachlan Tidmarsh and Ginger Ostrow will be leaving the district for exciting new opportunities, and while we wish them well, both will be hugely lost. Is Lachlan here and Ginger? No? No? We're honoring them in abstention? Okay, well, I hope they're listening or watching on the video. Lachlan has been our chief information officer since 2012, and really helped the district move much closer to our goal of providing equitable access for technology for all students, and he's led a really dramatic transfer, transformation of the IT department. It's much more dynamic and mobile-friendly resource and accessible than it was previously, especially to some of our stakeholders like parents. And he's just done an extraordinary job, and he will, will be missed. Our chief financial officer, Ginger Ostrow, has been an amazing resource during very difficult times, has worked extraordinary hours, has been someone I've relied on deeply, as has, as have many others. And, you know, her expertise and her, her ability to handle complex financial issues has been a real big part of her success as chief financial officer. So, they're both outstanding employees, we, we hate to lose them, but we do want to wish them well and honor them today. And in that mode, in terms of continuing our strong work here at CPS, part of that issue, as we've talked about repeatedly, is the district's financial situation. We still have a $480 million hole in this year's budget that must be closed mid-year, in addition to the $1.1 billion deficit overall. And we pursued a number of avenues and possible solutions to prevent cuts to the classroom in the second semester, and we, that's something we continue to devote time and effort to. Once again, we still need Springfield to act, we need Springfield to reimburse the Chicago Public Schools at the same rate that they do for other schools throughout the state of Illinois. As many, as, as we have noted repeatedly in recent weeks and months, the inequity in that funding is at the core of the district's financial problems, even as our kids do better than ever, even with record attendance and graduation and test scores and college graduation, the, the cloud of the, of the district's financial situation hangs heavy over the district. And at the root of it is a system in which Chicago schoolchildren receive less than $3 in state education funding for every $4 that children in other parts of the state receive on average. So, it's been gratifying to see that Governor Rauner, Speaker Madigan, and President Colleton have acknowledged some of these inequities and continue to talk in Springfield, and we hope that people of goodwill will ultimately bring a fair solution for our, for our children. In the meantime, we have worked a number of levels to attack that mid-year deficit, including a planned reorganization in which we will save tens of millions of dollars by shrinking the administrative footprint of the district, in addition to other potential changes, and we have proposed to the Chicago Teachers Union this week a contract proposal that would provide teachers with a raise over the life of the contract, provide incentives for retirement for those teachers who are eligible, would provide, really address a lot of the quality of life issues that, that teachers have said are important to them, like reduced paperwork and more autonomy in the classroom. But at the same time, it would help us in the short run to address this, this crisis and help us get through the school year without layoffs and without, without cuts to the classroom. So we're hopeful that we can work with our partners in labor over the next month or so to try to conclude an agreement that would do that, and we're going to work very hard on that proposal. So with that in mind, I just wanted to give that update, and I'm going to turn it back over to, I believe, to Janice, who will invite Ron Denard, our chief and, or Vice President for Finance, to walk you through an important financial proposal.
Good morning, Board of Directors, President Clark, CEO Claypool, CPS colleagues, and the general public. My name's Ron Denard, Senior Vice President of Finance. I stand before the board to request two specific actions. The first one is, we're, we're asking approval of an additional $120 million of long-term bonds. This would increase the bond-specific approval for this 2016 January issuance up to the authorized amount of $1,160 million. These bonds will finance certain additional capital needs, such as diet high school, there were, there's safe and dry projects such as roofs, roofs and mechanical repairs, you know, such as boilers. That's the first action. The second action, I'll give a little background on it, and this is asking for permission to borrow an additional $130 million of short-term financing. The, the state is currently laid on about $210 million of payments that they owe CPS. $150 million of that is state block grants, the other $60 million is capital reimbursements. As of December 31st, the state will owe us an additional $130 million. So at December 31st, in total, the state will owe us $340 million. You know, this puts extreme pressure on our cash flow, and we're doing short-term borrowing. CPS currently has $870 million of short-term lines, we're borrowing an additional 65 that's already been authorized, and, and by year-end, we will be fully extended. So we're asking for an additional $130 million that will provide short-term financing and get us through to our bond issuance. We continue to advocate for the equitable funding from the state for the children of Chicago. Are there any questions?
Frank, I have. So, so before the question, Ron, let me just say, what, what the folks in the crowd don't have a perspective of is how much time you give to us every month outside of your regular job, and one would say your regular job, of course, is keeping us updated and answering our questions, but that doesn't solve any issues, just going through Q and A. So thank you for the amount of time you dedicate particularly to me to go through this. So, to get to the question, it's kind of a multi-part. So one is, where do we max out in short-term and long-term debt? When do we start to come down, and what are your feelings about sustainability as we go through the spring and early summer?
So, with short, short-term borrowing, we, we have a maximum for the, and it's tied to the, the first property tax payment, so we still have a maximum of about $1.8 billion of short-term capacity. So with this issuance, it would take us up to $1.35 billion, but we plan on paying that back down to $870 million when, when we do our bond issuance. As far as sustainability, we will continue to try to manage our short-term finances the best we can through, you know, through the summer, but it is imperative that we, we put some of the actions that we've talked about in place, whether they be cuts or being more efficient or being, or, or getting additional revenue sources.
Yeah, I think just to follow, make sure, so, short-term debt's going to max out at about $1 billion, then come down about $100 million, and long-term debt's going to max out, or going to hit a level at about $7 billion?
Yes, yes, long-term debt with the next issuance would be at $7 billion.
Just trying to paint a clear picture for everybody of where we're at right now and the, and the needs to get the funding from the state paid to CPS, and then, and then a more longer-term strategy relative to state participation and what we're doing in the school system in Chicago.
Yes, you're correct.
Jesse?
Just this week, Ron, unfortunately, we've seen a downturn in the high-yield debt market. You know, there's been a run, in essence, on some of the high-yield debt funds, and unfortunately, it's often deemed a precursor to another recession, and so that's been in the news a lot this week. What does that do to our ability to borrow and to the cost of borrowing to us? I don't know if our advisors or bankers have updated us since some of this broke on Monday.
Well, we're in, we're in discussion with our underwriters every day, and we do look at, you know, market pulses. You know, the impact on, on your bonds really depends on that period of time when you're actually going to the market, but we have an excellent underwriting team led by J.P. Morgan and Barclays, and we have Morgan Stanley and a host of other underwriters, so, so we have about the best team that you could get to deal with the high-yield market, and they're all very, very experienced with the high-yield market.
Have we gotten any updates this week?
They're, they're aware, I mean, they've spoken to us, and, I mean, they're, they're aware of the, you know, of the uptick, but again, you know, we're, we're going into the market closer to the end of January.
Just to follow up on Jesse's question, we know that the Fed, we believe the Fed, sometime today is positioned, perhaps, to announce an increase in the, in interest rate, maybe a tick-up, don't, don't know. And I don't know that, like, the... And I don't know that everyone appreciates, when we do a bond issuance, it's junk bonds. What effect, if any, do we think if the Fed, in fact, increased the interest rate, will have on our ability to sell our bonds?
Well, we would, so, we would go under a conservative assumption that it would increase the interest rate on our bonds, which in a sense is more favorable to the buyers of the bonds because they'll get a higher return on the bonds.
Thank you. Okay, no more questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to you, Janice.
Okay, thank you. Just to complete the rest of the CEO's report, I wanted to give a few additional updates and also provide a few farewells, unfortunately, for a few of our staff members. First, I'd like to acknowledge that Karen Van Oostel, the Executive Director for Social Emotional Learning, and also Beth Masetti Miller, our Chief Officer for Early Childhood Education, will be departing CPS for new opportunities. I think it's important to acknowledge that under the leadership, both of their leadership, we've seen an improvement in their departments. Specifically, under Beth's administration, we've seen the increase, an increased number of students who are in our preschool and early childhood programs. And we will continue some of the efforts that we are putting in place to increase the number of students who participate in those programs because we know with that solid foundation, our students will have a better chance at being successful. So, we will miss Beth and her leadership, but I also want to assure you that we have a solid transition plan in place to make sure that we continue to capitalize on the gains that have been made so far. Finally, Karen is leaving to go and work for Castle, which is a larger national social emotional learning organization. Those of you who know Karen, if you don't know Karen, you definitely know her work. She's done an amazing job. We've seen an increase in social emotional support for students in Chicago, a decrease in out-of-school suspensions and in-school suspensions, as well as expulsions amongst all of our students. We still have a disproportionate gap, as you know, with our minority males, but Karen's team has already begun putting the program in place to improve that, and we believe that that will continue to go forward even as she transitions. With that said, I want to transition and give a few updates or things that we're going to vote on today and also provide some updates from previous meetings. First, I'm happy to announce that we will be releasing the district's calendar, which is earlier than usual. It might seem like a small thing to some people, but for parents, it's really important, for parents, teachers, and the like, so that they can successfully plan. Despite the things that we're going through in the district, we think it's really important to continue planning for the next year. Those of you that have run schools know that you typically start planning for the fall right around now. So, this really is important to show that we're moving forward. Also, at previous board meetings, we had several speakers, and speakers here today to advocate for lots of things, including diverse learners and our Montessori programs. Since our last meeting, I'm happy to report that I've had an opportunity to meet with the principals of all of our Montessori schools, both district and charter schools, as well as visit all of those schools. And I can tell you that we identified a lot of common themes across the schools so that we can provide them with better support. But the one thing I want to acknowledge is that when I met with the principals, and I meet with a lot of principals in different groups, this group I was really impressed with because they were very solution-oriented. They gave us a lot of good ideas, so the things that we'll be reporting on, I can't take credit for those. But the one thing that they asked for, didn't have anything to do with money, they really just wanted a public proclamation that CPS was committed to Montessori. And I want to make sure that people understand that we do have a commitment to Montessori programs here. And to that end, we will be creating a professional learning community for the principals. So, the principals have agreed to meet outside of their normal duties, outside of their normal network meetings, so that they can get targeted support for the leadership actions that it takes in order to run a successful Montessori program. So, we're really excited about that. We're also in talks with securing a consultant to work with the teachers in those programs because what we heard from the teachers is that they often go to some of the network meetings and that they feel that they have to kind of fit into, you know, fit a circle into a square peg, if you will. So, we want to provide them with the support that they need. The one short story that I'll share with you is after visiting the schools, we visit schools all the time. Eva, who works with me, we went to a traditional school. And after we left the classroom, we said, "Man, it's different going in a, you know, traditional classroom after visiting so many Montessori schools." And different in a good way. It's not a slight on any program, but what it really did show is that something special and something powerful is happening in our Montessori programs. And in a district this large, it's important to have diversity and choice for our parents. So, really excited to learn and continue to be a champion for the programs as I continue to learn about them myself. Another important update is around our support for our English language learners. We will be coming back to you possibly in February with a more detailed report around how our students are doing. But our Office of Language and Culture has really taken on, taken seriously some of the actions that CPS is required to implement, and we're going a bit further than that. I'm happy to report that we have identified 300 schools who offer EL programs to our students, to a significant population. And so far, our OSAY team has visited 195 of those schools. And principals and teachers in those schools are being provided with detailed reports about what we're seeing and also, not recommendations, but actions that they must take in order to improve the quality of programming. Karen, who leads that department, is here today to answer any questions if board members had some right out of the gate. But what I can say is that we've visited almost half of those schools and that we will be providing a more detailed report to the Board, possibly at our February or March meeting. So, more to come. The last update is that 156 of our schools will be receiving a Creative Schools grant from our partner at Ingenuity. We're really excited about this. They are making an investment of over $2 million. And as you know, given the financial situation that we're in, these grant dollars are critical. And the arts are extremely important, as we saw here today. They really make for a well-rounded education for our students. And we're really excited and thankful for our partnership with Ingenuity so that we can continue to provide programming in our schools that are in most need. Before I turn it over to Hal Woods to give you a presentation on CICS Hawkins, as promised from our last meeting, I wanted to know if any board members had questions about the updates regarding OSAY or questions about the Montessori program as these two topics have come up quite a few times.
Board members, Jesse?
Well, given it's one that I took a lot of interest in and kind of initiated...
Yes.
Could Karen give us a brief update of where we are, given that it does, it's a significant compliance issue for a district with federal law in terms of what federal law mandates that we provide?
Absolutely.
EL students.
Karen's already on her way up.
Good morning, Board members. My connection to this work, first of all, to start off with, goes back to my family. Much like Mr. Ruiz's family, they were on the South Side. My grandfather was a steelworker, and my father was a CPS student along with his 10 brothers and sisters. I'm happy to report that he did graduate from college and went on to go into international business. So, my coming back to Chicago is to try to help offer opportunities to our students. Chicago is a global city. We're serving children from all over the world. When we think of bilingual programs, we typically think of Spanish, and that is 85% of our population. However, we have bilingual programs in 16 other languages, including Nepali. So, when you hear about earthquakes in Nepal, some of those students eventually migrate to Chicago and find their home here, and we provide bilingual services to them. We have at date, at 30th day, 70,999 English learners. They are enrolled in 565 of our schools, but there are 343 schools that have 20 or more and must offer robust programs. We're in the process of visiting those schools. But under Dr. Jackson's leadership, we, she and I have had some great conversations, and especially around her experience as a chief. So, what we did is we asked every single school to submit a self-assessment. So, we gave them a detailed rubric of how the principal could go in and take a look at their staff, look at their students, and begin a self-assessment before we even come on board. Then, our staff comes in, makes an appointment, we have a whole calendar. We have completed 195 of those visits, and the schools that we chose to visit first have the heaviest English learner enrollments. So, we targeted the big schools first. And what we do is we look at everything, from lesson plans to materials, to access to programs, to all facets of how the children are being treated and if there are equitable opportunities. It's really about opportunity. And from there, we do give the principal a report, and we actually plan to then go back and follow up. So, where we are now is our network chiefs are briefed on these visits. Network chiefs are looking at trends within their areas because they all serve different kinds of children. And then, they will form a network goal. And they will also include these visits in their talks with their principals. So, it'll become a way of, part of what a principal needs to do to include in their overall leadership of the school. In addition, some other work is taking place. We hope to come forward to the Board with a revised bilingual ed policy this spring. And a lot of work has gone into that, and we're very proud of what we'll be bringing forward to you. And last but not least, I do want to mention that we have an initiative, the State Seal of Bilinguality. This is one that's eligible for high school seniors. And high school seniors who may have been former English learners or who have studied world language to a tremendous degree are eligible to prove their high level of college and career success in English on the ACT, as well as prove their proficiency in a second language. And once they do that, we will be awarding them the State Seal of Bilinguality. This will go on their transcript. It'll tell the world of work and the world of college that they are truly capable and fluent and literate in more than one language. Our goal is 1,000 seniors this year. Last time I looked at the online application, we were over 600. So, we're well on our way. And we're very excited because I believe CPS will be honored this spring for our commitment to bilinguality. So, a lot of good things happening, more to do, got to stay on the path, but I'll come forward with more information at a later date.
Thank you.
So, does this put us in good stead with ISB when they conduct our audits and typically? I mean, and that's one of the reasons, frankly, I kind of pursued this because I know when I was at ISB, CPS was frankly always in hot water and always missing the mark on this front.
We had submitted our first round of responses and have heard back from ISB. We're still addressing some of the issues. However, I think that they are taking note of this robust plan to visit schools and also some of the evidence of professional development that actually started with the Principal Institute that I believe you spoke at. And that is showing good faith effort to them. So, the conversations are very, are very good right now and positive.
Well, good, because in my 11 years of hanging around public education, state board level and here, this has never been done. So, I hope they appreciate the fact that we're making a great effort that frankly is unprecedented, long overdue, but, you know, glad that we're starting to do it.
One final fact, included in the visits are charter schools. So, we recognize that charters are also responsible for the law, and so we are visiting charters. And we have seen charters begin to scale up their efforts in trying to address the needs of the students.
You should, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, Board members? Dr. Jackson?
Yep.
This is an item that you should bring to the Board's attention in terms of giving us updates from time to time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Hal is going to give us a quick update on CICS. Thank you, Karen. We took note at the last board meeting that in addition to the recommendations, you guys wanted to, wanted more specificity around our plan for ensuring a successful transition in student safety, and Hal is going to present our plan today.
Good morning. So, as you all remember, last month, Dr. Jackson presented CPS's recommended revocation of three charter school campuses and the non-renewal of an additional school. The recommendation for revoking the CICS Hawkins campus was deferred until this month's board meeting due to CICS's contract stating that CICS required 30 days of notification to the Board of Education taking action on the school. As a reminder, Illinois School Code states that one of the four reasons a charter may be revoked is if the school fails to meet or make reasonable progress toward achievement of the content standards or per pupil, per pupil performance standards identified in the charter. In December 2014, CPS notified six charter schools that they were failing to meet or make reasonable progress toward student achievement based on their school year 14-15 SQRP rating. These six schools were Amanla Charter School, Betty Shabazz Sizemore Campus, the Betty Shabazz Shabazz Campus, CICS Larry Hawkins Campus, CICS Lloyd Bond Campus, and Polaris Charter School. Once notified, each charter school was required by state law to submit a remediation plan to rectify the academic deficiencies. CPS required the schools to submit their remediation plans in January 2015. With the release of the school year 15-16 SQRP ratings and underlying data in October 2015, CPS conducted a review of each of the six schools' remediation plans to determine whether the schools had successfully implemented their plans. This review revealed that three of the schools listed here had failed to implement the remediation plan. Illinois Charter Schools law is clear that once a charter is given notice of revocation and has submitted a plan for remediation, if it is determined that the charter school has failed to implement the plan of remediation, then the chartering entity, in this case, the district, shall revoke the charter. So, following the Board's actions at the November board meeting, a cross-functional team from CPS during the week of November 30th held family information sessions for students currently attending the four charter schools that have either been approved or recommended for closure. Parents were notified about each information session via phone call, home mailings, robo-texts, and social media. At each session, parents were presented with higher-quality school options, both district-managed and charter, both with respect to the school's proximity to the current, to the student's current school and proximity to the family's home address. At these sessions, parents also had the opportunity to meet with representatives from CPS's Safety Department, the Office of Diverse Learner Supports and Services, and the Department of Support for Students in Temporary Living Situations. With respect to the proposed enrollment options for students attending CICS Hawkins, we're actually holding a, in conjunction with CICS, a second parent information session tomorrow, December 17th, at the school. CPS and CICS are working together to assist families with the application enrollment process. The proposed options, which are all Level 2-plus or higher, include CICS Longwood, Bowen High School, Carver Military Academy, and three South Side Noble campuses, the Hansberry, Butler, and Baker campuses. Due to the proximity of CICS Hawkins to these schools and the limited transportation options in the area, CPS will provide bus transportation to current CICS Hawkins students to these schools as long as 10 or more current students attend. With respect to additional supports that CPS is offering for safety and security supports, CPS will prepare a customized safety plan for each student transitioning from CICS Hawkins to their school of choice. Regarding academic supports, the district will provide a variety of academic supports, both during the current year and during the first-year transition. This includes retaining a principal transition coordinator who will be a resource to the current principal of CICS Hawkins to help maintain the academic rigor in the classroom and ensure a smooth transition. This also includes assisting with data support. So, to help facilitate a smooth transition for all students, CPS will provide schools receiving CICS Hawkins students with comprehensive data on all transitioning students. So, student-specific data such as test scores, attendance, and grades will enable all school staff to proactively identify and prepare to meet the needs of every student. And finally, regarding supports for students with specific needs, students with diverse learning needs at CICS Hawkins will continue to be provided instructional support, both in the general education classroom and in small group or individual settings in accordance with their IEPs for the 2015-2016 school year. Once students transition to their new school, all instructional, paraprofessional, clinical, and related services will be provided in accordance with the students' IEPs. Students in temporary living situations will have an opportunity to meet with an STLS Transition Support Coordinator to develop an individual transition plan and receive ongoing enrollment support from that coordinator through the beginning of next school year. And finally, CPS will assist each new school with serving students based on their language needs. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board members, Jess?
No questions, just a comment. I mean, this is the way it should be done. So, I just commend your great work. So I just commend your great work in working with CICS and partnering with them and putting forth the best interest of the children and taking care of every aspect of the transition. This is the way it should be done. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a comment as well, Frank. And just to say, Janice, I asked you to meet with them personally, and you did, and they engaged with me. And I just reiterate what Jesse said, I knew this was in process last month, but this is the way to do it. And then I think you probably owe us is if we get to a place where we don't have ten students, but we have a high number, is whether we do it in this form or whether we just see each other during office hours during the months, which happens dynamically all month long, just give us a sense if we have kids that are at risk because we didn't hit the magical ten number and what happens with those kids? So we have a sense of where they go. I know you do this all the time, and you're experts at it, but it would still be good, given the feedback we've been given by the community in some of these schools, to have a picture of where these kids, how these kids get to the next school.
Absolutely.
Can I say just a couple of things? I agree. I appreciate the rigorous process and the detail that you all are going through, and it's important. I just want to acknowledge some of the parents or, you know, community members. I heard them shaking, I saw them shaking their head no, as if some things didn't happen. I just want to make sure that perhaps there's some follow-up. If you feel like there was some engagement that did not happen, to connect with someone, to make sure that you are included in that process, if that's what that was indicating. The other piece on the students, though, is there an effort to coordinate with parents to get that magical ten number so that they can be a cohort, a posse of some sort, to actually be going to the same school and support one another, knowing that that cohort model perhaps helps with that transition?
So I mean, just speaking with respect to Hawkins and the meeting tomorrow, we will have representatives from CICS, obviously, will be there. Bowen will be there, Carver will be there, Noble will be there. So again, I mean, the ten is a number that we came up with internally, but I mean, we see, you know, eighth graders from Alkald Gardens, you see a contingent going to Corliss, to Bowen, to other high schools. So I think that will continue. Yes, I mean, there will be an encouragement, I think, of folks to attend schools so they can be a cohort together.
Any other questions for Hal? Hal, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Eva and Kara from the board can follow up if there are any parents who want to make sure, you know, any of their concerns are heard, if you don't get to speak today.
Dr. Jackson, did that conclude your remarks?
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, just a brief announcement. I wanted to continue to encourage everyone to use our website, cpsboe.org. We have a tool, I've mentioned it at every board meeting, it's our Get Help Now Tool. I think that based on the usage I've seen, people are getting a timely response to their question. It's also a way to schedule office hours right over the website. So it's both convenient, efficient, and I wanted to encourage the continued use of that tool. Madam Secretary, please share the details for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, January twenty seventh, twenty sixteen, at the CPS Loop Office. Due to the Martin Luther King Holiday, advanced registration will open at eight AM Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty sixteen, and will close on Monday, January twenty fifth, twenty sixteen, at five PM or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's proceed with today's public participation session. Madam Secretary, please share the rules of public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with our board office staff member. We have Mr. Eric here waving his hand here. He will assist you. You will be lined up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience, and I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for the speakers to see. When there are thirty seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as the railing as possible, this will still allow people to pass through the area safely. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, I believe we have one elected official and a representative, a senior representative from CTU.
That is correct, Mr. President. So first, I will call Alderman Napolitano, please, from the Forty-First Ward, followed by Michael Brunson, the recording secretary from CTU. Alderman?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the board, CEO Claypool. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm coming here actually with hat in hand, just with a statement, and I want to thank you for letting me be here today. Again, my name is Alderman Anthony Napolitano of Forty-First Ward, and I'm here today to represent Ebinger and Dirksen Elementary School to discuss the immediate need for an annex to relieve overcrowding. Five years ago, CPS projections indicated that there would be an overcrowding issue in Ebinger. We are living the problem today and need to act immediately. Ebinger's parents and staff have advocated tirelessly, and were told in the past that we would be a high priority. But still, our seven hundred and seventy-six children are being crammed into a building designed to hold five hundred and ten. There are no classrooms left. Cafeterias and closets are places where we expect to foster education. In twenty fifteen, Ebinger's actual growth rate exceeded the average with nine point two percent. Ebinger will see almost nine hundred students in less than a few years, once again in a school that holds five hundred and ten. Ebinger is in a crisis mode, and we need a firm commitment now for an annex. Current real estate data shows that the tremendous growth rate is not slowing down. Chicagoans are investing in the Forty-First Ward. They believe in the power of neighborhood schools, and the belief has manifested into a more overcrowding of a school four miles away from Ebinger and Dirksen Elementary School. Like Ebinger, Dirksen has eight hundred and sixty-five children in a building made to accommodate five hundred and forty, and they are growing. Dirksen has been forced to eliminate dedicated classrooms for arts, special education, bilingual instructions, and even privacy-driven social work, and as used for testing. It is not uncommon to see Dirksen spill over into common areas. They do not have a playground to play on, they are on a blacktop playing. The fact is, is both these schools are tremendous flagships for CPS. They are both Level One-plus. Except even with the cramped conditions, it is a sole testament to remarkable school students and the staff and parents. I understand that we're in a budget crisis, everyone is well aware of that. That's why I'm coming here hat in hand, and just to tell you, when the smoke does settle, the children and the growing rate in these schools is not going to settle. So I'm coming here as a friend, hoping we can work together and help accommodate these two schools before they bust at the seams, because they are doing a great job over there. These teachers, these parents, and these LSCs are such a part of these schools, and we really do need your help. And I would love to have the opportunity to work with you. Thank you again for allowing me to be here. Sorry to go so fast, but I see I went over. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mr. Michael Brunson, please.
This is the new board. You have not met me yet. My name is Michael Brunson. I am one of the four officers of the Chicago Teachers Union. I'll be brief. I want to respond to this board's claim that our educators, our students and educators that have already given up so much must sacrifice more. You claim you are broke because you must spend too much on things like special education, retirement pensions, healthcare, and even more than that. And we say that your financial status is a result of your choices, that you are broke on purpose. We say that you refuse to pursue progressive revenue options but choose to ease the tax burden of the mayor's wealthy patrons. The mayor that appointed you is currently facing a crisis of legitimacy in the city? And after the scandals here in the board with your previous CEO, the exposure of private interests driving CPS policy are becoming very aware to everyone? And we say that you cannot afford to damage your relationship with the students, parents, and educators even further. The predatory bank deals, i.e. toxic swaps, total tens of millions of dollars. That's money going to the bank profits rather than schools as you cry broke. So, right now, you're threatening to lay off twenty-five percent of Chicago's teachers, an act that would destroy the public education system in our city in order to cover up a budget gap created by these deals. With everything going on in our school system, we ask that you do a few things. First of all, you need to do a full investigation as to what caused these interest rate swaps and why we owe so much money, and that because I believe that your former head of the board was involved in making these deals. So that's one thing you need to do. But as far as your money goes, you need to join the CTU pursuing progressive revenue options in Springfield, like a financial transaction tax, a millionaire's tax, progressive tax structure in the state of Illinois, bills that close corporate tax loopholes and unwarranted subsidies, and once again, terminate these toxic swaps that are bleeding tens of millions of dollars from our school system, and claw back some of that money that we need for our students and our educators.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson.
Thank you for your time. Any questions? No questions?
Thank you very much for your comments.
This is a nice-looking group, I must say that. I must also say so myself. And I haven't seen you, Frank, since you shut down those fifty schools. It's nice seeing you again.
Well, I do hope I see you in Springfield, walking hand in hand as we try very hard to get those revenue dollars flowing back. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I will now proceed with calling speakers from the speakers list. Thank you. Our first speaker, Mr. President, will be speaker number one, please, Christopher Ball, followed by speaker number two, Jelani McEwen, followed by speaker number three, Jirok Please state your name.
Christopher Ball. I'm speaking on behalf of More Than a Score, a coalition of parents and citizens opposed to the misuse and overuse of standardized testing. Last summer, the U.S. Department of Education put lie to fears that districts and states with opt-out rates above five percent on NCLB mandated tests would be punished in some way. Twenty percent of the students in New York State opted out of the test. The U.S. Department of Education did nothing. Up to ten percent of the eligible students in CPS boycotted the PARC assessment this spring. The just rewritten NCLB Act is now explicit that its annual testing requirements do not override state or local decisions to allow parents to opt their children out. The federal law bars schools from excluding students, not parents from excusing their children. Boycotts will grow significantly this year. CPS must issue a clear policy of no tolerance for lies to, threats against, or abuse of students and families who refuse the PARC. It must not pressure principals to suppress opt-outs. Relying on standardized tests as the primary measure of achievement harms the quality of a public education, as the system focuses more on scores than on students. Now sixty-five percent of the school rating policy is made up of NWEA test scores. PARC must never replace it for high-stakes ratings. PARC is measuring family income, much more so than NWEA does. For grades three to eight, the correlation between a school's percentage of students at or above proficient and the school's percentage of low-income students is point-eight-three, where zero is none and one is a perfect correlation. It is critical that CPS not use the PARC as a high-stakes test. CPS must issue clear information to parents on the limits of this test and their right to refuse it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Jelani McEwen, Director of External Affairs for the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. Good morning. Later this month, the Illinois Network of Charter Schools will release a new study on student enrollment patterns across Chicago that really looks to answer the question of twenty years of increased school choice, has it benefited the children, the families of our city? Two months ago, we came to the board meeting discussing this idea, acknowledging that fifty percent of students across high school and elementary school are currently attending schools other than the ones they were assigned to. When we looked at the numbers and we see the average of the SQRP for those schools and when they move, eighty-four percent of those students who move are attending a school of equal or higher performing on CPS's SQRP rating. It's an overwhelming number of students and families who are finding a better school when they decide to look. And it's not just charters that are part of the story. That includes selective enrollment schools, and almost fifty percent of the movement happens to other attendance area zone schools and other neighborhoods. So parents are showing themselves to be extremely savvy and being able to judge and evaluate schools based upon their experiences with the institutions in their local context. But charters are a positive part of the story. One of the things we did in the study was look at the enrollment of every charter school in the city of Chicago and where that student would have been zoned to go to. And then we averaged the SQRP score over two years for those students. And then we subtracted that number from the average over the two years SQRP for those charter schools. Seventy-four percent of those schools have a positive number showing they're having, on average, a better impact for their students when they choose the charter school. But all is not imperfect in Chicago. Families across our city, especially on the South and West Side, experience tremendous hurdles. This was documented in Mary Patillo's recent study. Whether it be transportation issues, financial resources, safety concerns in terms of distance of travel, or the hurdles of a complicated application process, there are families that are not able to activate their choice, even if they wanted to. And so over this next year...
Mr. McEwen? Thank you for your...
If you have any other questions about the document, we are available to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As the next speaker approaches the podium, Mr. President, I will call speaker number four, please, Augustine Moran, followed by speaker number fifteen, Nakia Terry, please, and then we'll have speaker number five, Orwin Mayers, and speaker number six, Vondell Singleton. Please state your name.
My name is Jirok Metta, and I live in Albany Park, Chicago. I'm a proud parent of a second grader who attends Agassiz Elementary on the North Side. I want to start my comments by saying we love our daughter's school. It has been an amazing learning environment for her, and besides her incredible principal, the teachers and staff are almost entirely the reason why she's thriving. Everyone, from the homeroom teachers, the reading specialist, the dance teacher, the Arabic teacher, the librarian, and the security staff, they all make a difference in helping our daughter thrive. In short, it's the teachers and staff who make Agassiz Elementary the great school that it is. So given this experience, I'm very concerned that the district will continue to attempt to fix the mess that has been caused by management on the backs of educators and on the backs of families, largely low-income families in this city. By cutting teachers' pay, by closing schools and cutting services, make no mistake, an attack on teachers' working conditions, their pay, and their ability to retire in dignity is an attack on my daughter's learning conditions. There's no way around that. I know that teachers are simply not to blame for the financial conditions in which the district finds itself. Risky bond deals, sweetheart service contracts, tax increment financing schemes, and privatization, these are the issues that have undermined the financial health of the district. Yet teachers and students, like the high school students at DeSable, who are fighting to save their library, have paid the biggest sacrifice for these errors in management. What the teachers are asking for is what's right for all students and their families. Smaller class sizes, support staff like nurses, librarians, and playground instructors in every school, significant reduction in standardized testing, and not least of which, fair pay. These demands are in the best interest of all Chicago families. So I and other parents will continue to stand by our teachers and their students and their families until we have a world-class public education system in this city that all Chicago families deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Metta. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
My name is Augustine Marin. I am a parent and LSC chair at Sudamontessori Magnet School over on Washington and Damon. Good morning to the board and CEO Claypool. I'm here talking in regards to Montessori. And I'm not sure if the board is familiar with Montessori teaching, but it's a fabulous way of learning. It's an alternative for charter and traditional schooling. In the last... In the last week, we've had the privilege and honor of Dr. Jackson coming and visiting, actually, the six Montessori schools throughout the city, and she has educated herself and familiarized herself with what Montessori is. I can sit here, I'm sorry, I can stand here and talk for hours and hours on Montessori. That's how much I love this education. My son, I have a son that went to traditional school, and had I known of Montessori teaching, I would have sent him, and he had gone to LaSalle Language Academy. But Montessori is, it's fabulous, and I think it's something that, I would say, the people of Chicago should think about looking into Montessori. There are over 7,000 kids on a waiting list for Montessori teaching, and it is something that we need, something that needs to grow, something that I think that parents would really, really be surprised on the type of education. But again, thank you, Dr. Jackson, for coming out, familiarizing yourself, and seeing what our school is about, and we hope to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Last call for Speaker Fifteen, Nakia Terry. Moving on to the next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Orwin Mayers. Good morning, Board. My name is Orwin Mayers. I am a senior at Gary Comer College Prep, the Student Body President, a member of CHAMP's program, and a fellow for the Chicago, future leaders of Chicago. Thank you for having me this morning. Growing up in Chicago, there are many challenges students like me face. I think recent news highlights are a challenge not many speak of until it's too late. I have heard the horror stories that police do to people, people do to people, and it saddens me because I love my city. I could easily be saddened and leave it at that. However, my mentor and assistant principal, Mr. Singleton, has created a program that serves as my outlet. Being a member of CHAMP's has been life-changing to me, and I am surrounded by other young men who want to make things of themselves. We challenge each other every day. My favorite things about CHAMP's is the family feel, being able to lead younger peers while learning from my mentors, also having a positive outlet while having a lot of free time on my Saturdays. It is because of CHAMP's mentoring group that I am ready to take on college. I have already been accepted to the University of Iowa, Illinois State, Grand Valley State University, Dillard University, and Monmouth College. I hope you have the CHAMP's group as a whole so we can show you what we do and why we do it. Last year, we won the White House Student Video Award, and this year, thanks to Canon, we'll be making our very first movie. Thank you for allowing the Gary Comer College Prep to open in 2008, and because of the CPS allowed us to do so, I will be attending college come fall. Thank you.[777.79][777.79](APPLAUSE).
Please state your name.
Von Dell Singleton. Good morning, Board. My name is Von Dell Singleton. I am the Assistant Principal of Gary Comer College Prep, a campus of Noble Network. As many of you know, our city is in chaos. Our communities are divided, and our young black men are oftentimes the victims of these circumstances. In fact, Gary Comer College Prep is located in Chicago's Greater Grand Crossing neighborhood and is plagued with high crime and high poverty rates. It is with these challenges in mind that I took it upon myself to attack the root of the problem: culture. I created CHAMP's, culturally helping and making positive success with the mission to help our young black men change their minds and their hearts. My hope with the program is to empower our young men to be healers of their communities, very important, our schools and media by raising their voices in a positive manner. If the Board would have us, I am more than happy to return with all 100 of my young men and leaders to share how this program has empowered them. We currently have students who are in college returning to Chicago to mentor their former classmates. This is real to them. This is a movement that is going to change the South Side narrative and ultimately change the world. Thank you for having me, and I hope you have a blessed day. Happy holidays to you.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton.[882.01][882.01](APPLAUSE). Mr. President, our next speaker then will be Speaker Number Fifty-four, please, Reverend Jeanette Wilson, followed by Speaker Number Seven, Jeff Jenkins, Speaker Twenty-four, Max Jenkins, and then Thirty-two, Julie Greenberg. If you could please identify from those three individuals the two designated speakers. Thank you. Please state your name.
Jeanette Wilson, National Executive Director of Push for Excellence. Good morning, Mr. Clark and all board members. It is an unusual opportunity for me to be on this side of the aisle and this side of the podium. I am here, not as an immigrant, Mr. Ruiz, but as one of my ancestors were either the indigenous people or those who were captured and brought here as slaves. And then my parents came here from the South as refugees running from segregation. It is within that context of racial tensions and hostility that we are witnessing in the city of Chicago today, that every action you take has an international but local impact on the children that you are here to serve. I am pleased that this board has been reconstituted. I believe in this Chief Education Officer. However, when I heard the reports about the charter school and what had happened, the process has not been opened, which is why one of the board members saw me shaking my head. It has not been as was stated here. We've been, parents and administrators met with us at Push for several weeks now, and it was indicated to us that Betty Shabazz and Bronzeville, both of those schools, there was no visit by the administration prior to the recommendation for closing of the schools. It was suggested that test scores were adjusted or tampered with by CPS, and so it changed what appeared to be the performance level of those two schools, Betty Shabazz in particular and Bronzeville. I would submit to you that you might want to, as a board, relook at how you close schools and what process really is being implemented by the administration that you oversee. The policies are not open and fair, and there are some questionable policies which existed prior to your coming onto the board or even prior to this administration.
Thank you.
So, I would encourage you to reconsider your decision. We're prepared to meet with you as a part of the community about the challenges you face in meeting the economic challenges, and I know that you're going to be looking at closing other schools.
Reverend Wilson, thank you for your comments.
Prior to doing that, I would ask that you meet with us to look at how you can save the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Wilson. Last call for Speaker Number Seven, please, Jeff Jenkins. Last call for Max Jenkins. Last call for Julie Greenberg. Moving on to the next speakers, Mr. President, from Amandala, they are Speaker Number Fifty-one, please, Marilyn Grace, and Speaker Fifty-two, Sherri Watson.
Hi. Good afternoon. I was one of those that was shaking my head as well.
Can you please state your name?
My name is Marilyn Grace. I'm a parent of a student that attends Amandala Charter School. I was appalled and hurt to hear of Amandala's closing. This school has been a big influence and increasingly positive impact on my daughter's life, as well as many other students, especially with their One Go College Prep program. What is, what are we going to do now with the increasing static statistics in the Inglewood area? My question to you is, when is the line going to stop? You have already closed 50 CPS schools, and now you're attacking the charter school system by closing many of them. Right now, there is a limited availability for my 11th grade daughter and the 12th grade students to find a Level One or Levels Two charter school in the Inglewood area because many of the charter schools are not accepting our students at the end of the school year. In fact, there are no open enrollment Level One or Level Two schools within two miles of Amandala, and there are no Level Two school, plus, one of them is Amandala, and the other ones does not usually accept seniors. Well, I was told, Ms. Grace, you may not have a choice but to enroll your child in a public school in your area, even though you're a taxpayer. Our neighborhood school is Harper, a school that is significantly lower...
Ms. Grace, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Sherri Watson. I'm, my name is Sherri Watson. I'm a parent of Gerard Anderson.
Can you move your microphone a little closer to your mouth?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That would be a little bit better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sherri Watson, and I'm a parent of Gerard Anderson. He is a ninth grader at Amandala Charter School. Gerard is a special needs student, and at Amandala, he has, he gets all his needs met. He's been at Amandala for three years. He is learning sign language and how to speak better at Amandala. Amandala also gave him the, also gave him a chance to go to Washington, D.C. for his eighth-grade graduation, graduation class. He enjoyed his trip when he went to Washington, D.C. This year, he is learning job skills for when he graduates from high school. His aide, Mr. Dobie, is working with him. He has been with Gerard ever since he started at Amandala. When I heard Amandala was closing, I felt that we were losing our family. Once he leaves Amandala, we will have hard time, hard, a hard time finding another school Once, once he, once we try, we've been trying to find other schools, but no one is willing to accept him yet, or they're not calling me back. I want to know, how can I find another family that will help Gerard get a better education so he can come here and maybe do sign language like she's doing? Or find some kind of job when he finishes his high school, his high school education? Thank you.
Ms. Watson, thank you.
Bless you.[1359.33][1359.33](APPLAUSE).
Mr. President, I'll continue with the speakers, and our next speakers will be Speaker Number Nine, please, Melissa Hughes, followed by Speaker Number Ten, Erica Clark, and then we have a group of five individuals, Mr. President, that I will ask to identify two designated speakers with the topic of proponent of traditional schools, and they are Speaker Number Eleven, Vicky Marquez, Speaker Twenty-seven, James Wagner, Thirty-seven, Peter Elmore, Forty-one, Julia Lee, and Forty-six, Blaze Mulgarry. Can you please state your name?
My name is Missy Hughes. I have been teaching at Team Inglewood Community Academy for nine years, where I'm a founding teacher. I love my school and my community, which is why I'm here to implore you to support CTU's proposal to put a protected, full-time restorative justice coordinator in every school. Last year, for some time, I was able to be a restorative justice coordinator. I only taught one class. I was able to create a peace room where I worked alongside Annette Toscano, who is at our school currently on a grant, to implement restorative justice practices in our school. We implemented opportunities for students to be accountable without the use of shame and that accountability. Students would come to us and say, "I think there's going to be a fight," or "I'm about to fight, but I don't want to." Students come to us for lots of reasons. Some of the kids have nicknamed it the Magic Room. Cory, who recently shared with Dr. Jackson, went to the peace room when his friend died. I remember that day. I was in the hallway, and I heard him calling my name, and I went to the room, and he was guiding his friend Jay, who had a vacant stare and tears streaming down his face. Cory informed me that he found Jay laying in the hallway on the ground crying, and he said to me, "I knew here is where he needed to be." Our students are experiencing complex traumas, and we need to do better by them. A full-time restorative justice position not only supports counselors and social workers, but helps build capacities for both students and staff to help students begin to address and heal from those traumas in ways that could be transformative for our schools, when done with intensive support from the district. Grants don't last, and so that's why we need this support from you. I can't do the work and sustain it.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Good morning. Good afternoon. My name's Erica Clark. I am with Parents for Teachers, we're a parent advocacy group. I'm here today to let you know that parents stand behind our teachers and their union. We applaud them for using every tool at their disposal, including the threat of a strike, to win a contract that protects both teachers and students. The teachers have presented you with a list of proposals that are reasonable and educationally sound. They represent the things that all parents want for their children, and I bet the things that many of your children had in their schools. Things like smaller classes, more art, music, and social services, less testing librarians, and an end to wasteful charter expansion. Your response, including the proposal from yesterday, has been to demand huge pay cuts and threaten massive layoffs. Essentially, you've got a gun to teachers' heads. You're saying, "Accept this or else." That's not a negotiating strategy. It's blackmail. Teachers won't stand for this, and neither will parents. If you're broke, because it's because of your financial mismanagement and disastrous policies that put the profits of Bank of America and Goldman Sachs over the needs of our students, you refuse to go after these big banks. You refuse to demand that the mayor return the TIV surplus funds. These things alone could solve your budget deficit for this year. You cry poor while paying off no-bid crony contracts, bloated central office spending, unneeded new schools, and huge, huge salary packages for Mr. Claypool's buddies at the CTA. Parents are fed up. So, if you think you can use the current financial mess and as excuse to abuse and destroy our hard-working teachers, think again. And if you think you can use the financial crisis to drive a wedge between parents and their teachers, I'm here to tell you, that's not going to happen. You're going to have a fight on your hands. We've got our teachers' backs, and we will be with them in the streets, just like we were in 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.[1651.63][1651.63](APPLAUSE). Last call for the individuals registered. Speaker Number Eleven, Vicky Marquez, Speaker Twenty-seven, James Wagner, Speaker Thirty-seven, Peter Elmore, Forty-one, Julia Lee, and Forty-six, Blaze Mulgarry. I'll move on to the next speakers, Mr. President, and we have Speaker Number Twelve, please, Timothy Henigan, followed by Speaker Number Thirteen, Latoya Ellis, and then Speaker Twenty-eight, Felicia Mays, followed by Speaker Number Fourteen, John Casey. Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Tim Henigan. I am a community representative on the Ebinger LSC. I'm proud to say that all three of my children graduated from Ebinger Elementary School. As a longtime resident of Edison Park, I'm here to advocate on behalf of the community for the approval of an annex for Ebinger. We are sensitive to the funding issues that are plaguing our city and state. However, we know that there is other funding that can be used for capital improvements. We would like to thank Mayor Emanuel for meeting with our community this past September and acknowledging just how desperate Ebinger School is for an increase in space. We hope the Board of Education will accept any revenue from the tax levy approved by the city and use it for school construction. We also ask that you make Ebinger a top priority. The data continues to show that our school population is growing at a very fast rate. In 2011, our school population was at 594 students, K through eight. Our projections for this current school year puts us at 742 students, but those projections were incorrect. We have 776 students. If we continue at that rate, our school will have over 892 students in three years. In 2016 and '17 school year, our middle school class sizes, which will be our middle year's IB program, will reach 45 and above in each classroom. We are asking the Board of Education to recognize the negative impact these increased numbers will have on student learning. These physical conditions are not conducive to the needs of any student. Our needs are immediate, and we ask that you announce plans for an addition to the current Ebinger campus. We need to act now to proactively solve the current epidemic state of our overcrowded classrooms and strategically plan for our future. classrooms and strategically plan for our future. In conclusion, we believe that investing in Ebboner's addition demonstrates your commitment to providing overcrowded schools like ours with the appropriate learning environment, supporting the mayor's promise to ensure the stabilization of the middle class.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Hello, everyone. My name is Latoya Ellis. I'm a parent with three students in Chicago's Public STLS program, which is a supportive program to help homeless students. My family and I became homeless due to a loss of a job and was evicted from my apartment in August of 2014. I have seen what happens when students are denied transportation. Recently, CPS decided to stop giving bus cards to freshmen. My daughter was denied bus cards in the beginning because she was a freshman. I often did not know where that money was going to come from to pay for her transportation. I had to borrow money from people, even my boss, at one time, just so she could get to school. My daughter was very irritated because she wanted to attend school. She liked, um, the culinary program in the school. I was worried I would have to transfer her because she was denied bus cards. My daughter had to walk over an hour-long distance to miss, or even miss some days from school. Freshmen should still get transportation because even though they are freshmen, they are still suffering a hardship, and they still need to get to school. Also, the way the policy, the current drafted policy is worded in regards to transportation needs to be very clear. When you read the transportation section, it's hard to understand. If it's hard to understand, staff over the program can interpret it how they want, and people can be denied services. It is already hard enough to get transportation as it is. So this wordplay to confuse people only makes things worse. There is much, there is much misunderstanding about the program across CPS. Staff are misinformed, and people are wrongly denied services. This is why we need a comprehensive policy immediately. Please work with your staff to get out a policy that is easy to understand, especially regarding transportation, which is the biggest barrier for homeless children. Thank you for your time today. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
Just one second. Forrest, we, uh, we get this question about every other meeting. Is there someone here that can help, um, and your team, or at least before they leave, if they're not in the room, can they, can we get that person so they can, we can solve this? This is like the question that comes up every time.
We were working on it, and Arthy DePellea, who's not here anymore. I mean, we were close to revising the policy. I remember meeting, you know, five or six months ago, and unfortunately, Arthy left. But that work should continue, and we should be having that. And I've pointed out, obviously, there's federal law that oversees this.
Yeah, there is, there's, I think that's right. I think there is a draft policy. So I think rather than speculate or not get it entirely right, I think, why don't we review that and maybe report back to the board? I think that'd be the best option. So we'll get you an answer.
Okay. Well, Ed, we want an answer, but the folks that are here today.
Sure, of course.
If you guys can get connected with Forrest's team before he leaves so that you walk out of here with some knowledge, and, or where you're going to get the knowledge and when you're going to get it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. John Casey.
Good morning. My name is John Casey. I'm a member of the CTU Big Bargaining Team, a graduate of Loyola, and a former Peace Corps volunteer from Nepal. For the last 20 years, I've worked at Cameron Elementary in the West Hubble Park community. For eight years, I was a teacher, and for the last 12 years, I've served in the role of school counselor. Two years into my role as school counselor, I was assigned the task of Special Ed Case Manager. It's a task that is performed by a majority of elementary school counselors in Chicago. We are the only district I know that assigns this responsibility to school counselors. While vitally important to securing resources for our diverse learners, Special Ed Case Management can consume an enormous amount of time, scheduling conferences, completing and reviewing documents. In some schools, the caseload can be as low as 30 or 40, but in many, it's over 100. And in those with cluster programs, it can surpass 200. Schools with higher caseloads have less counseling time. The boundaries of Cameron include the street where, this past summer, seven-year-old Amari Brown was shot and killed on the Fourth of July. I have kids in my building that knew Amari, that played with him. A few weeks after the shooting, police arrested and charged 20-year-old Rashid Martin with the shooting. Rashid Martin had been a student at Cameron. As a counselor case manager, I did not have much time to work with Rashid Martin. The Office of Social Emotion Learning has worked in the last few years to try and supply our teachers with resources to work with our students, but the fact remains, we have certified mental health professionals in each of our buildings. These are people who have the skills to work with students and their families. Unfortunately, they've been tasked with a lot of responsibilities that go beyond that which they were trained to do, work with students and their families. Two years ago, I'll skip that, I joined the CTU Bargaining Team to advocate that school counselors be given the time to work with kids. We've been told that there's no money to do this at this time. I argue that the price we pay as a society is much higher. We'll never break this cycle of violence or create a climate of equal educational opportunities for students.
Mr. Casey, thank you for your comments.
If we don't address these needs, please consider how we utilize our counselors.
Thank you.
Just a question. You know, Dr. Jackson, our, our case managers may often be counselors, correct? But they're not always counselors.
In the elementary school, almost all of the case managers are counselors at the elementary level.
Not at, not in high schools.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next speakers will then be Speaker number 16, please, Soraya Lofton, followed by Speaker 17, William Iacolo, followed by Speaker number 18, Susan Hickey, and followed by Speaker 19, Wendy Catton, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Soraya Lofton, and I am a school nurse. I'm here to express my concerns about the current contract that CPS has with RCM. This is a $30 million contract over 30, over four years to provide supplemental nursing services. It was put in place this past August and has been chaotic. From the beginning, RCM was unprepared to provide services to students. Many students, which were receiving nursing services, starting in the beginning of the school year, did not have, started without a nurse, leaving CPS nurses who are already overextended to cover services. This inconsistency continues despite the complaints about it. In addition, not only are we seeing that these services using this agency are less efficient, it's also potentially costing CPS more money. For example, C, RCM charges more for RNs and LPNs per hour than what is currently paid to CPS RNs and LPNs with less accountability and poor management. So what is the solution? For $30 million, CPS could take $15 million, train 100 nurses over four years to become CSNs with competitive salaries, and develop partnerships with local universities that provide school nurse training. In addition, they could also develop in-house agency that would be similar to a subsystem for teachers, and nurses could be hired per day or per case, depending on needs ascertained by experienced CPS nurse leaders. Final ask, we want to provide quality care and service to the students we serve. However, due diligence, planning, and proper execution is needed. RCM has failed to demonstrate this and continues to put our most vulnerable children at risk. In closing, I urge you to reconsider this agreement and utilize a participatory model by engaging CPS nurses working on the ground to develop an innovative approach, such as some of the things outlined, and providing health services to students. And if these were any of your children, and they said, "I cannot breathe,"
Thank you.
"Then you would want to nurse there as well."
Thank you for your comments.
Just for the record, I, management is going to provide the board with a, we're going to take a look at best practices around this issue and provide us what, a better insight to what this should look like. Obviously, the management believes, and have reported to the board, that what we have now meets our needs. But I, we understand that this, like so many other issues, is crucial. So I, what I, my response to you now is that we have asked for a review of best practices around the industry so we can get a handle on what we look like vis-à-vis others. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is William Iacolo. I'm president of the Operating Engineers. I represent the engineers that have worked in the Chicago schools since the late 1800s. Only our union has operated your equipment and maintained safety for the students. I originally wasn't going to talk, even though I had signed up, but I've been thinking about it while I was sitting here waiting. I've met CEO Claypool, but I have not had a chance to meet all of you, so I thought it'd be good at least to take this opportunity. I've addressed your predecessors many times on subjects, but never on the subject I'm going to ask you today, nor would I ever have addressed this, other than this was such a hasty decision. Today, you're going to have to decide whether to take the recommendations to fire an engineer who the CPS is blaming for carbon monoxide leak at the Pressing Elementary School. Now, I've been with Chicago Public Schools as an engineer for 42 years. Not one person has asked me my opinion, and I can tell you, I worked at Pressing in 1976, and the same exact equipment is still there. Nothing has changed in that school. I can't say that the boilers caused it, the burners caused it. The boilers are just a closed vessel with water that creates steam. The burner is a combustion piece of equipment that can cause carbon monoxide, but out of an exhaust like your car. The engineer was working in a building. I don't know if any of you know this, but Manley High School, Waters School are named after engineers from our union that worked in the schools that have saved the lives of students and sacrificed themselves, especially Manley. He, he died saving the students at the Moose School. In closing, I just want you to reconsider the termination of an engineer who helped the students get out of the Pressing School safe. I will never address you about a termination. I'll handle it during the regular process, but this was a hasty decision. Within less than a month, they decided to fire this man.
Thank you, Mr. Iacolo.
Thank you very much, and pleasure to meet all of you.
Please state your name.
My name is Susan Hickey. Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about Dan Coyne. The law department is going to ask you to terminate him, um, at the end of the school year, in spite of a ruling by ISB that said that he should stay. He was supposed to be, you know, on the same, he got that ruling on October 9th, very important date. It's the same date that Barbara Bird Bennett pleaded guilty to having, accepting a bribe. The same lady who told Dan Coyne, "You must follow the rules." But I guess it wasn't for her. It was only for him, you know, on that. What he's guilty of, living in Evanston. Ronald Denard, who just recently got a waiver, lives in Flossmore. You know, the Inspector General, Schuler, recently objected to him getting a waiver because it shows inconsistent policy toward residency. Why is Denard more valuable than Dan Coyne? Let me tell you about Dan Coyne. I'm here, I'm a union, you know, I work for CTU, but I also am here personally because I know Dan. He, uh, he started as a social worker in 2002. He and I were actually runners-up for Social Worker of the Year in 2012. And the reason why he was runner-up for that is because he donated a kidney to a cashier. That story, I'm sure some of you guys weren't on the board at the time, that story made national news, which then, all of a sudden, the board realized, "Oh, he doesn't live in the city." They decided to try to fire him because of the residency thing. He had a meeting with Huberman, Huberman, who said that, "It's okay. You know, you can stay. Tim Colley can stay. You can stay too." Then Barbara Bird Bennett came on board and decided he has to go, even though there was like a gap of time between the two.
Ms. Hickey, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Wendy Catton. I'm with the parent group Raise Your Hand. I'd like to say, to start by saying thank you to CEO Claypool and his team for listening to parents, principals, students, advocates, and teachers in restoring many of the special education teachers and aides that had been cut this year. You showed a responsiveness that we have not seen with other CEOs in recent years. That said, this is still a work in progress, as many schools didn't win their appeals, and some schools never made appeals. Either way, we appreciate that you took this matter seriously. In addition to special ed staffing, the current nursing staffing and other support service staffing is grossly inadequate. I'm glad to hear that you're looking to review it, and I didn't write this testimony in coordination with anyone, but I know this to be the case from very personal experience as a mom who has had many trials and tribulations seeking a safe 504 plan in this district at no fault of my son's school for many years. I have had back and forth with numerous special ed administrators who have come and gone over the years about the unsafe and unreliable practice of staffing school nurses with temporary agencies. This is not a bottom-line place to save money. Parents around Chicago are having to miss work to fill in when temps are absent, or having to train rotating shifts of temp nurses because the certified nurses can't be available with this caseload. I know this because I have done it many, many times, on and off for many years. I ask you to treat this issue with the same respect you've given to the special ed issue. Today, you're voting on a $29 million contract for surveillance cameras for our schools, an expenditure that is quite questionable at this time. You have, you have approved $133 million in contracts since July. Yes, we've counted. But I ask you.
Ms. Catton.
I will finish.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Do you take, can I finish?
Thank you, Ms. Catton.
Please.
I'm sorry. Thank you. We have other speakers behind you. Thank you. Our next speaker, please, will be Speaker number 20, Tammy Vincent, followed by Speaker 21, Michael Bauer. And then we have three individuals that registered from Fanger. I would ask that you identify two designated speakers between Speaker 22, Harry Williams, Speaker 43, Marissa Woodhouse, and Speaker 56, Robert Gorman. Please state your name.
Tammy Vincent. I'm a special ed teacher at Oscar de Pries. I obtained my teaching certification through a cohort of teachers in Bellwood, substitute teachers that were given the opportunity to go to, you know, go to college as a group, get our master's degrees, and become teachers, very similar to the Grow Your Own program, which is currently being defunded by the state. So I started teaching in Chicago at Bethune, which is located in North Landale. When I started there, the principal had the autonomy to hire staff for lower class, lower class sizes. But Bethune was eventually turned around by AUSL. All of the veteran black teachers that were there were fired. AUSL bought in people from outside the community and given all sorts of money for resources, but the school still failed. Every year, there was a decline in test scores. So when those other 50 schools that were voted on were closed, Bethune was also closed. That closure disrupted the Landale community. It caused the firing of multiple black teachers. So I, you know, I was able to find another job, but, excuse me, the closings, turnarounds, reprogrammings, and the unfair evaluation system is unfairly targeting African-American teachers. But my union has brought this to the attention of the board, and this board has actually acknowledged the fact that there is a decline of black educators mainly because of the policies that have been put in place by this board. So my union is asking that we go to Springfield and ask for policies that are not intentionally racist. We're asking for policies that are not intentionally destabilizing communities in the city. We need to have TIF reform. We need to have progressive revenue. We need to have other things in place where black children and black teachers are not unfairly targeted. So it's my hope that we can go and do something that gets rid of the tale of two cities that we're living under.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Mike Bauer. I'm the interim CEO for Chicago International Charter School. Good morning, CPS Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to advocate for the students and families we serve at Larry Hawkins. Before I get into that, I want to make sure that we establish some history. As I'm sure you remember, in September of 2009, Darian Albert, a young man from the Alkell Gardens community, was tragically beaten to death while walking home from Fanger High School. This story received much local and national attention. As a result, CICS was approached by CPS to start a high school in the Alkell Gardens neighborhood. CICS agreed and opened the doors to Larry Hawkins in August of 2010. Our mission at CICS is to prepare our students for college and career. I want to be clear here. We at CICS have not lived up to our mission with Larry Hawkins. There are many reasons for that. Heightened challenges with enrollment, safety, and shifting demographics are a few of those reasons. Our partners at CSUSA, who have managed the school over the last couple of years, have Our partners at CSUSA, who have managed the school over the last couple of years, have started to make progress despite those challenges, and we should salute them for that. In fact, they have improved Lloyd Bond, another CICS school down the street, and that is now a one-plus. Although Larry Hawkins is a safe school that is progressing, time to improve is not a luxury we have. Students need high quality, and they need it now. The saddest part of all of this is the traditional neighborhood options for our students are not high quality. In fact, if they were charter schools, they would also be up for closure. If the vote today is closed, our students need safe access to quality options. We have started those talks with CPS, and I applaud their willingness to cooperate thus far, specifically how. We realize the job of the CPS staff board is very challenging, especially right now given the current budget crisis. However, I must remind you that there are over 200 underserved and consistently marginalized students in Alkell Gardens who will be displaced if the vote today is to close. If that is the case, our ask is that you truly commit to the resources that will ensure our students and families are taken care of as they begin the transition. That is not going to be an easy one.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
They deserve a high-quality option.
Thank you for your comments.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. President, the designated speaker for Fanger Alumni Association will be Speaker 22, please, Harry Williams.
Good morning. My name is Harry A. Williams III. I am alum of Christian Fanger High School, class of '75, and a newly elected president of Fanger High School Association, Alumni Association. I along with the members that our president will meet today are products of a quality education that we received at Fanger High School. Back in 1975, when I graduated, we had over 5,000 students, and in 1975 graduating class far exceeded the original class of 13 students with over 600 students graduating. We are here today to show our firm support of the current structure, positive learning environment, expanding community partnership for Christian Fanger Academy High School, and to gain your support and endorsement of Principal Richard Smith and his plan to rebrand, rejuvenate and restore Fanger High School back to the powerhouse that it once was. The Alumni Association is fully committed to the restoration of Fanger, is the full desire of this body that our alma mater continues to develop and provide pathways for its students. Recently, the Alumni Association had a great opportunity to meet and voice our educational and enrichment concerns and recommendations with the newly appointed Principal Smith. Principal Smith values our partnership and believes in the course of action that must be followed to restore our once prestigious high school back to educational prominence. Principal Smith has developed an action plan that will entail restoring key strategic career technical educational programs, which we will believe will increase enrollment at Fanger High School and foster increased community involvement and participation and cultivate relationships with the local CAC, PAC, Ministers Alliance, civic leaders, business leaders, community associations, parents and students. We've also received the endorsement from 34th Ward, Kerry Austin.
Mr. Williams, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 23, please, Kewanna Hibron, followed by Speaker number 30, Tiffany Henderson, followed by Speaker 40, Sierra Washington, and then Speaker number 26, Robert Lamont. Kewanna Hibron, last call. Next speaker, Speaker 30, Tiffany Henderson.
Good morning, Board. My name is Tiffany Henderson, and I am a very concerned parent and staff member of Bronzeville Lighthouse Charter School. CPS has been very careless with the lives of our children. Since the decision to close Bronzeville, CPS has not honored any of our insurances that were made at the last board meeting. We were promised support in finding better schools for our scholars, including transportation. CPS came to our school, they did not assist or educate the families about this process. We were informed that our children are not guaranteed slots at better schools, and that transportation is not a guarantee, as indicated last month by Janice Jackson. Because of your carelessness and political agendas, our children are being sacrificed and will be forced to attend one of the neighborhood schools. Our school currently outperforms six out of the seven schools in our area in NWEA attainment, attendance and enrollment. I just pulled my children from one of these schools, and several parents are worried because they have found Bronzeville to be a much better and quality option where children are doing better than the schools that you will have them to attend. After only one year, our principal has brought the leadership that we need to continue to grow, and our school is improving. The decision was made to close our school without stepping foot to see these changes, correct incorrect data that CPS has published, or even give the school a warning or remediation plan. Everyone that has come through our doors has said this is not the type of school that you would close. I just ask that you give BZLCS due process. Look at the growth, look at the culture and look at the incorrect data. Come see our instruction, and I guarantee that you will see that this school is not a Level 3, and this is a school that doesn't need to be closed. From the handling of our school closing to the lies that you have told to our families, it is evident that our children do not matter. After all, CPS was in our building taking measurements and rolling out equipment well before the board voted to close. Do the right thing and show that you care for our black children on the South Side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
The next speaker will be Speaker 34, Tiara Washington. Um, Tiara Washington, number 40, will not address the board.
Good afternoon. My name is Tiara Washington. I'm a parent at Bronzeville Lighthouse Charter Academy. My daughter started there in 2010 after she left Educare. I currently reside on Educare Chicago Alumni Network, which I'm over driving children to success. I'm the chairperson of that, and I'm the co-chairperson of enrichment activities. I come to you all before, and before you all today to ask that you all send someone out to Bronzeville Lighthouse Charter Academy to speak to those kids, to let them know. I have a 10-year-old, and I cannot tell her only the reasons why you all are closing. I feel that it's a disgrace to all those kids, 473 kids, to have to go look out and find different alternatives for school. First, Janice Jackson, you all said that you all will have grief counselors there for those kids. I need for one of you all to send someone out there to talk to those kids, to let them know the importance of why you all are closing their school down. I need for you all to also be reminded that these are kids, so they don't understand that it's politics and work. I need for you all to understand that my child would not be able to go to any other school, neighboring school. I have worked at Drake, Williams, Wells, and I would not send my child to none of those schools. I would really appreciate if someone from these board or Janice Jackson come out to talk to them. I don't want a grief counselor coming out. We just lost my grandmother in August of 2015. I don't want a grief counselor. I want someone from you all's administration to come out and talk to her, and talk to those kids, to let them know what's really going on.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Robert Lamont, Veterans for Peace. The Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps is a recruiting system for the military, and you're a part of that. Testimony by the Commandant of the Marine Corps, General Jones, reads, "One-third of our young men and women who join a Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps program wind up bearing the, wearing the uniform of a Marine." That's one-third. Chief of Staff of the Air Force, General Ryan, said, "Almost 50% of the folks that go out of the Air Force ROTC go into one of the services." That's 50%. And there are 10,000 kids in ROTC in Chicago. That's between 3,000 and 5,000 kids will end up in the military, closing out other options. The former Secretary of Defense said, "It's one of the best recruitment programs we have." The American Public Health Association has a policy that opposes military recruiting in schools. They see war as a public health issue. In their journal, June of 2014, the authors concluded in the section entitled Militarism in the Public Schools, "After the military draft ended in 1973, it has been difficult to maintain a volunteer army large enough to fight wars. The main source of young recruits is the U.S. public school system, where recruiting focuses on rural and impoverished youth and thus forms an effective poverty draft." One-third, 50%, poverty draft. Our children are likely to be part of these. We want only education, not a poverty draft, not militarization of the Chicago schools. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont. Our next speaker then is Speaker 29, Robert Jewell, followed by Speaker 31, Hugh Nguyen, Speaker 33, Matthew Luskin, Speaker 50, Lamar Miller, and 42, Laquan Mims. Last call for Robert Jewell.
Please state your name. Good afternoon, Board. My name is Robert Jewell, and I am president and founder of Education Media. We are a media fundraising company, and I was down here two and a half years ago presenting my money-making opportunity. I just wanted to come back and take this opportunity to, again, present my idea. I understand there's, you know, there's new board members and there's been some transition. So really, I just came down to talk about the program, how I participated in the RFI originally, which is Request for Information, which led into an RFP, which is a Request for Proposal. My company's done a lot of good. We've raised lots of money with little or no effort on behalf of the school districts. I have a media background. I've owned and operated numerous alternative media companies. And again, I'm just here to introduce myself and hope that I have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Clark, the new president, at some time in the very near future. That's really about all I had to say. I was just going to end on this note, that you really have the opportunity to work with the company that can bring money in from outside sources. I have national sponsors right now that are courting me and my company, and they want to get involved. They just don't know how to do it. And they want to see their ad dollars, they want to see their sponsorship dollars spent wisely, and that's where I come in. So I want to thank you again for taking this time and extend a invite to President, Mr. Clark, for a personal meeting at some other time.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Hugh Nguyen. I'm a parent at Gertha Elementary in Logan Square, and I'm here today to talk about compassion and trust. I trust that you all are aware of that Chicago is in a precipice of social and political tensions. And as much as I thought about coming here and talking about numbers and stats and figures and bringing charts to explicitly show how the board and CPS have contributed to these tensions, I was actually just overwhelmed by the words compassion and trust. And so while I have another 90 seconds to express my unyielding support for the teachers and CPS, I want to share a poem by Vietnamese peace activist Tet Nghi Khatn. And he wrote this poem when he heard about the bombings in Bad Dang, and a comment that was made by an American military man who said, "We had to destroy the town in order to save it. So for warmth, I hold my face in my hands. No, I'm not crying. I hold my face in my two hands to keep the loneliness warm. Two hands protecting, two hands nourishing, two hands preventing my soul from leaving me in anger." And in a system that we all know is very broken, I'm amazed at and inspired actually by how poised and compassionate our teachers continue to be. And that poised compassion, it shines through this gray canopy of mismanagement, and that's because our teachers truly care about our children. And instead of letting their anger and their frustration over, consume their souls, their compassion extends their hands, and it nurtures and continues to protect our children. So I'm here today to talk about the unwavering trust that parents have in our teachers, and I urge you to awaken your compassion that's dormant in you so that a new dialogue, a new dialogue can take place. Compassionate listening to our teachers' needs for a more just and fair contract is really the first in of many crucial steps that's going to be towards restoring the parents' trust in the CPS officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Matthew Luskin. I'm the father of three sons in the Chicago Public Schools. I intended to speak more generally about funding crisis at CPS, but the, and the board's role in it, but a few days ago, I got news that made this much more personal. Desmond, my four-year-old son, has spent every night this week making piles of art projects as a gift for Ms. Rocher, the beloved teaching assistant in his preschool class at Hamilton Elementary, and as some sort of, you know, twisted Christmas gift to Ms. Rocher and the students at Hamilton. She was informed that she's being laid off, that the last day of this week, she'll enter the holiday with her job having ended. And, you know, this layoff is part of this latest round of reshuffling out of the cuts to special education that you guys have been implemented, that one member of the board cynically called "right sizing" of the special ed program, as if we've been spending too much on special education students. You know, I'm furious about the impact of this caught on my son and his class. I'm even more furious about what this is doing at this point in the school year at the many schools that have been hit much harder. And I'm mad because I understand that these cuts are a choice, that, you know, the budget is not some unpredictable weather pattern that flew in out of nowhere, that we need to have no choice but to run for cover. It's a result of decisions made by this board, the previous one, and the man who appoints you. As a parent, we've heard you loud and clear, full-day pre-K is only for those who can afford it, $13,000 tuition at a neighborhood public school. Special ed students shouldn't expect to have their needs met. African-American high school students shouldn't expect libraries anymore. But, you know, my son, right now, has been asked to do something very difficult and say goodbye to Ms. Rocher, so we're going to ask you to do difficult things too, to speak out against these banks profiting off of these swap deals. Imagine if CPS spoke out and said, "We will not do business with Bank of America," until the $500 million in profits that has been taken by this set of four banks actually was returned to the school district. I realize that would be hard for a board that has contained so many bank CEOs and was led by one that was central in these schemes. I realize it would be hard to speak out in support of the millionaire's tax that the public voted for when this board has had so many. And for a CEO that has bragged about, that has bragged about, to the press about Ann Rand.
Last call for Speaker number 50, please. Lamar Miller.
We're the ones who've been in Springfield. I haven't seen you there. I haven't seen you advocating for these policies.
And last call for Laquan Mims. Our next speaker, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 36, Patrick Kelly, followed by Speaker 38, Cody Rogers, and Speaker 44, Beatrice Saugun, followed by Speaker 39, Abby Please state your name.
Patrick Kelly. On October 30th, Pressing Elementary School was evacuated for carbon monoxide exposure. This story made national news that day and is still an ongoing topic with CPS parents, staff and the community I grew up in. Rightfully outraged parents have looked for answers from CPS. How could this happen? Is Pressing or any CPS school really safe? Forest Claypool and other top CPS and CFD officials appeared at Pressing on November 16th to address these concerns. Mr. Claypool and Mr. Hoyos accosted his rallying cry that evening was a suspension and possible termination of the engineer who was shared with Norwood's Park School that was on duty on October 30th. That engineer is my father, Pat Kelly. This announcement was not met with support from the Pressing parents and staff, but rather anger. The term "skate boat" and "fall guy" were repeatedly shouted that night, and I can easily explain why. Today, you will be asked to vote on whether or not to terminate my father, a conscientious engineer for an occurrence that was out of his control. I firmly believe justice will prevail if the union is forced to arbitrate based on your voting today to fire an innocent employee. Opinions were given as evidence by persons who have never actually worked in school buildings and have no firsthand knowledge of how this could have occurred. Never once was a union asked or brought in to discuss this unfortunate occurrence. The LSC principal reports going back to January of 2013 clearly show that the boiler controls at Pressing were in constant need of repair. Please see the handout. In fact, the method of taking fresh air into this building is the same way it was 90 years ago when Pressing opened. What happened on October 30th was not one person's fault. It was an oversight by an entire organization from the top down. Since the October 30th incident at Pressing, two more CPS schools have been evacuated for carbon monoxide leaks. In both cases, no engineer was on duty.
Mr. Kelly, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Hi there. Good afternoon. My name is Cody Rogers. I'm with Noble. This will be very brief. I just wanted to thank you, first of all, for listening to Mr. Singleton and Orwin, the class president from Gary Comer, about their CHAMP's program. I hope you have the opportunity to welcome more of the CHAMP students here. I know they love to share their story. And secondly, I just want to give you a quick update on our Pritzker Access Scholarship, which is a program we reintroduced last month to you. It's in its second year, and as you may recall, it is, essentially functions as a fully funded financial aid package for our financial aid package for undocumented students that don't have access to the funding that the vast majority of our high school students across Chicago do. We're extremely proud of the program. We have up to 70 students this year that'll be eligible for it, and the intent is that any Noble senior that is undocumented, that maintains minimum qualifications and gets into college, will have that college education funded. It's really revolutionary stuff. So in the one month since we announced it from last month, we already have 35 different colleges and universities that are undocumented students and have been accepted, too. We're extremely proud of them, and here we are just in the middle of December. That number is only gonna go up. It's really extraordinary stuff. We intend to keep you updated as we go and hopefully share this story so that there can be more like it in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Beatrice Sagun. I'm a resident of the Southwest Side and a mother of four children. My oldest daughter is currently a senior at UIC College. My second-oldest daughter is currently a freshman, also attends UIC College, and is a graduate of Noble Mutant College Prep. My son is a senior at Whitney Young High School, and my youngest attends UC SN, Sizumbo. My children are proof that there is no fixed formula for education. This is why choice, to me, is a very powerful thing. It is very important to me that my children have a choice. Noble offered my daughter structure and discipline. My involvement and her school's demand, high expectations, is what prepared her for college. You should see the awesome outcome today. I talk to other parents and, as always, tell them to look into the Noble schools. I don't see this type of discipline or structure that Noble offers anywhere else. I remember when my daughter was a student at Noble, she first struggled with all her work, her assignments, and adapting to the culture. By the end of the first semester, I was able to see the difference, but beyond that, my daughter was able to see the difference. She was doing the same level of coursework her freshman year that my eldest, in a private school, was doing. As a parent, this made me very proud. Having school options has changed the trajectory of our family. Options increase resources available to us. Options mean a lot to my family, and I appreciate the CPS Board for giving parents like me public choices and providing the Southwest Side with its first Noble campus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sagun. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Abby Ellenberger. I'm with the Grassroots Collaborative. Grassroots Collaborative represents community organizations, labor unions, and social advocacy groups from across this city. For years, we have come before this Board, often out of frustration about cuts, about closures, about deepening racial inequities. But we never come empty-handed. We've come to you over and over again with suggestions about ways that we can work together to pursue new, real revenue options. Things like permanent TIF reform, banks and Wall Street accountability, asking those people in our state who have more to pay more, to advocate together for a progressive income tax. Sadly, to date, this Board has dismissed all of those suggestions and has chosen cuts and closures and continued deepening inequalities instead. The members of the Grassroots Collaborative have not been armchair critics. We have continued to work towards those solutions. We, with our partners, have gone out into the streets, have done the research, have done the organizing, have sat in, have been arrested, and as a result, we have won hundreds of millions of dollars in TIF money back into this school district. We have sat down with executives from the Bank of America when you have refused to. We've sat there as those executives have told parents of closing schools, "No, CPS has never come to us to discuss ending the toxic swap deals. They've never come to us to ask for that money back. We have been doing the job that you should have." So while we know that you are not the same Board members of years past, you are inheriting a crisis of credibility, one that is plaguing all public institutions and individuals in the city of Chicago right now. So when you tell us you have no choice but to cut from our teachers and our classrooms, we do not believe you because you have continually dismissed the other choices that you have.
Ms. Ellenberger, thank you for your comments.
So we stand ready to continue to work with you if you choose these choices.
Our next speaker, please.
If not, we will continue to organize.
Our next speaker, Mr. President, will be Speaker 48, Tamea Breckenridge, followed by Speaker 53, Lena Fritz. Then we'll have Speaker 55, Ben Coyle, followed by Speaker 57, Tiffany Washington, and the last speaker, Laura Jane Hyde. Last call for Tamea Breckenridge. Can you state your name, please?
Yes. Good morning. My name is Lena Fritz. I'm here today to express my deep disappointment and outrage at the way that you have conducted your decision-making, Board members, and also in the process that the CPS administrators have done to close unanimously three charters, all on the South Side, all demonstrating improvement. Most concerning to me is the process by which you are closing Bronzeville Lighthouse Charter School, canceling a renewal site visit that you have promised in writing to complete in less than 24 hours prior to its scheduled occurrence. You claim you can't afford the several thousand dollars it would cost to conduct the formal evaluation. However, you are building a million-dollar annex in Lincoln Park for a school whose upper-income, white parents have rejected your cheaper alternative of simply swapping buildings to a larger school. Why is that? Why is it that you voted to close a school even though CPS refused to verify the data that was used? That the Office of Accountability still has not and never has released student rosters and NWA scores to the school administrators, and when confronted with that, was told, "Sorry, you should have caught that mistake in the summertime." BCLCS has more students scoring proficient on NWA in Park than most of the schools in the surrounding area. And even though we've pointed out your data discrepancies, you've made a decision based on three numbers and an unvetted performance policy that has been criticized as flawed. And because the school is one-tenth of a point away from a Level 2, that's enough to make your decision sight unseen. I don't care if it's a charter or a neighborhood school. You don't treat people and families this way. You don't close a school in 14 days from notification to Board vote without following any guidelines for public hearings, without meeting any requirements for evaluation based on the charter agreement that you agreed to. By the way, changing the rules 30 days in advance, that does not count.
Ms. Fritz, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
You have allowed politics to replace children in your decision-making, and it is disappointing.
Our next speaker, please.
... of CPES, of Chicago.
Please state your name.
Okay, members of the Board of Education, my name is Benjamin Coyle, and I have been a special education teacher at Hubbard High School on Chicago's West Side for the last 10 years. I'm also a member of the Chicago Teachers Union Big Bargaining Team. Being teachers, we try to make education work, but at what cost? With larger classes, teachers are feeling more overwhelmed and burned out, and we run the risk of becoming ill or exhausted. Teachers in CPS experience higher rates of burnout, absenteeism, and levels of stress. Unfortunately, it is worse because this stress comes as a direct result of the fiscal irresponsibility and mismanagement that the Board of Education created with the banksters it has decided to do business with. There's a few ways to fix this problem. First, there was $1.4 billion in TIF accounts as of July of 2015. 53% of TIF surplus goes back to CPS, so the Board of Ed should push the city to declare a $400 million surplus, so 200-plus million will go back to CPS while leaving money to gain interest in accounts. TIF transparency would eliminate the slush fund accusations and shut down the TIF district definitions. Secondly, Bank of America has something of ours, and we want it back. In summer of 2007, Bank of America officials became concerned that more financial trouble might lie ahead for their investors. Unfortunately for district officials, the banks told them nothing about the looming problems in the market, despite a federal law that requires banks to deal fairly with government borrowers. The $263 million deal went forward as planned in September of 2007. Within six months of the closing, banks stopped supporting the auction rate market, and it collapsed, sending the school district's interest payments soaring. Records show that the Chicago Board of Education voted unanimously to give school finance officials the authority to enter into the swaps, approving resolutions that didn't list the terms or specific amounts involved. So quite frankly, there's a difference between getting played and being played out. Many are asking, "How can we afford the teachers that we have?" And I'm asking, "How can we not afford the teachers that we have?" The city is on the brink of a meltdown, and with everything that the Board of Education has done wrong in recent history, right now is the right time to do the right thing for the right reasons for the right people.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Our next speaker, please. Please state your name.
My name is Tiffany Washington, Board President of Southwest Outreach Initiatives, Inc., Board VP of Bronzeville Lighthouse Charter School, and Community Affairs Manager at Family Health Network. As a community leader, it is hard to ignore the imbalance and segregation in the Chicago public school system. A child in Inglewood, in the Inglewood community, is not afforded the same resources and curriculum that a child in Lincoln Park is. Students are pitted against one another to compete for admission to the best schools, schools that should be accessible to every child regardless of race, status, or academic ability. My children and I have been a part of the Bronzeville community for nine years, during which time they have received a quality education. When my youngest entered first grade at Bronzeville Lighthouse after attending an area school, she was almost one and a half grade levels behind. After completing her first grade at Bronzeville, she was reading, writing, and spelling at grade level. She has made tremendous strides, something I wholeheartedly believe would not have happened had she not transferred to Bronzeville. Just last year, we took in 150 students from area schools into Bronzeville, and they are excelling now. Your decision to displace the students at Bronzeville and put them in lower-performance schools will set them up for failure. Now offering us a remediation plan, putting the blame on us for CPS's incorrect data reports, lack of adequate and timely communication, amongst other things, has displayed a lack of honesty, integrity, and compassion. I stand before you, a group of educators who have sworn to speak up and represent these students. I'm asking that regardless of the outcome, whether you decide to reverse your decision or not, that you still make a choice to stop by Bronzeville. See or witness for yourselves the growth of our students, the culture of the school, and the commitment that our staff exhibits to the students and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Our next speaker, please.
Laura Jane Hyde. I'm the CEO of Gildas Club Chicago, and I appreciate the opportunity to share with the Board and the staff, as well as the members of the audience, the free resource that we provide for any member impacted by cancer, especially in the school system. So we offer support for students and educators and families impacted by cancer. We help classrooms understand what a cancer diagnosis is, how it impacts a classmate, and how it impacts a classmate's parent or teacher. And we help students express their feelings about the cancer. They work together to identify ways to help one another, and we also provide smooth guidance and transition for students that are receiving cancer treatment back into the classroom, working very closely with Lori Children's. The program is customized by age. It isn't one-size-fits-all. It complements the grade-level learning, and we also provide in-service for educational professionals and community groups. All of this is free of charge. We do not charge any school. We've done a very good job of reaching the classrooms, but three out of four families are impacted by cancer. We know that we could be in a classroom a week. I know, having sat through this meeting, that there are a lot of important issues. This is a free resource that can help the system in a way that there isn't another organization in the city. So please consider us. We have information, and we will work with anyone that needs our support. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde. Mr. President, this concludes public participation.
Are there any questions from any Board members?
I do. There were a couple of comments that alluded to the fact that we were not offering some of the things that we had promised in terms of some of those school closures, and I know that that was a really big deal for us. And when we were discussing and voted to approve the closure of those schools, is that the grieving, the grief counseling, the transportation, the better schools. And so there was just a couple of comments in public participation that alluded to the fact that that was not happening. One, I guess if we can make sure that that follow-up happens, but what is the quality control to just make sure that what we were hoping and promising is actually happening?
I'll let Hal give an... I'll let Hal come up and give us an update, but we've made every attempt to make good on those, and we can just give you a quick status update on each school and what we've been able to accomplish, and then also what's coming next.
So we have had the parent information sessions with all of the parents we were able to contact at the four schools. Now, as, you know, we alluded to, some of the schools have been less receptive than others in terms of hosting us at those schools. And so we, you know, we have a deadline of actually this Friday where the schools who were, we took, the Board took action on last month, can actually submit an appeal to the State Charter Commission. We hope that once we get through that deadline, we'll be able to reengage with those schools. It'll be a more receptive process for working individually with each of the students at those schools to best decide their options. So we wanted to get out there as soon as we could after the Board took action to present options to all of those kids. But again, some schools, I mean, they wouldn't let us actually into the building to have the meetings, so we're continuing to work through that with those schools.
Any other questions?
The only, it's not a question, and I'm as guilty of it as... I know I'm guilty of it. One of the things that I would like to do from now on is make very sure that we get to visit charter schools before they're closed, because that's why I didn't like it. I was comfortable with the 50 we had to close, because that Board visited every school. And as a result, many of the schools that the list we started with was over 100 and some were taken off. So I think also that as Board members, we need to afford the charter community the same thing we afforded the neighborhood schools. And like I say, I apologize that I did not get to visit any, but that won't happen again if they're on the list.
Absolutely, and that's a priority of the new administration.
Not necessarily for you, Hal. I got a different question, a different subject. So if anyone else has a question for Hal, I want to go first.
Thank you, Hal.
My question was, one of the speakers talked about, well, two things, two of the issues was our nursing, which we're going to address, but just if somebody could just talk about the adequacy of our nursing, given that safety and security of students, you know, frankly, has been a national issue just yesterday, and, you know, it's ongoing. And that relates to the other item that somebody questioned, the wisdom of spending, you know, 20, almost $29 million on security cameras. But again, given the events of yesterday on both coasts, the first and second largest school districts in America, frankly, I think it's a prudent decision. Could somebody just comment on what we're getting with those and choosing to do that expenditure now? Jaden is probably the best person to...
So I can't speak to the nursing?
Right.
Thing, but I'll speak to the camera. So currently, we have cameras in probably about 60% of our schools. Unfortunately, our cameras are not updated. Some of them are over 10 years old. In addition, many of them are not connected to our city's 911 center, which is a very critical part of our strategy. So when we talk about safety and security, we look at a holistic approach, which includes being proactive in addition to using the cameras to conduct investigations. On the proactive side, what we're gonna get when this program is done after two years for the installation plus one year for maintenance services, what we're gonna have is cameras that are updated and connected to our 911 center at every CPS-owned school.
Does that also include CPS-owned facilities, even if it's not a school?
So the CPS-owned schools.
Okay.
So essentially, what we do is we have a 24-by-7 operations center, which monitors the cameras. Obviously, we can't look at all schools at the same time. However, we have strategies that we partner with our principals, as well as with our law enforcement agencies to prioritize which ones we're monitoring, given, you know, certain situations that might put things at high alert.
Is there a prioritization system for where you're putting... are we filling the gap in terms of factors that dictate that somebody gets a higher up on the priority list?
So the way the project plan is scheduled, we're going to have, in the first year, all schools that have, I'll say, all schools that have no cameras will go first. So we do have many schools that have zero cameras, and they will be first on the list. After that, in the second year, we will work to update those schools that have outdated legacy systems.
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Jaden. Who do you want Dr. Jackson to address the nursing question?
Well, Kate Foley isn't here. The only thing I can say is that the outsourcing of nursing is a new program, so it started this year in August. So we haven't done an in-depth review, as was requested, but I heard your comments loud and clear, and that's something we can take a look at. I can say anecdotally that we did receive complaints at the beginning of the year, but we haven't received a large volume since then. But I don't want to speak out of turn, so I'd rather go collect more information and come back and answer some of those questions.
The best practice assessment, I think, is an important part of this.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
One thing that's important to understand is the reason that we have these contracts is there's a national shortage of nurses that every school district in the country is struggling with. And so we're, there's different tools that are being used to try to make sure that we do have the full complement of nurses, when we need them, where we need them, and the flexibility to do that. given the fact that there is a national shortage. So I think that's just an important component to understand in this.
Thank you, Forrest. Board members, are there any other questions?
Just one other thing on the nursing, even though this administration was not here. I think it's real important that when you're making decisions about people in the field, that some of them are invited to the table. I just think that some of the nurses should possibly be there when we're making decisions, to hear from the people who actually do the work.
Thank you very much, Dr. Heinz. This will conclude our public participation session. Before we move into the executive session, I'm looking to see if there are any, just one more comment.
No, no, no comment.
Okay, having none, we will now go into executive session.
Mr. President, if I may, Member Jordan.
Sorry about that. That's what you're trying to do. May I have a motion?
I move for the passage of motion number 15-1216-MO1 and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subjects specified in the motion.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Father Garanzini?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you.
Can you gavel, please?
No.
The meeting of the Board of Education where we convene. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will start with items from closed session, and I will begin with a council retention. This item does require a vote. The law firm Taffs, D'Atanias, and Hollister LLP. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
Is there a motion? Dr. Heinz?
Okay, I move. Okay, okay, wait now.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Father Garanzini?
President Clark?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Mr. President, I will continue with settlements and other matters. These items do require a vote, and they are: First report, workers' compensation, payment for lonesome settlement for Mark Mitchell, case number 12WC32359. Second report, approve SEIU Local 73 Umbrella Salma Agreements. Third report, resolution accepting a settlement offer from Lehman Brothers, Inc., relating to master repurchase agreement with Lehman Brothers, Inc. For the record, Mr. President, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on this item, and now I will continue with other matters. The first report is the property tax appeal refund, authorized settlement for Imperial Realty Company regarding its property for tax years 2009 through 2011. The second report is the property tax appeal refund, authorized settlement for Proligious Park, Chicago, regarding its property for tax years 2009 through 2010. And the third report, property tax appeal refund, authorized settlement for Thomas Thompson regarding its property for tax years 2009 to 2011. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow Board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President, and that is for Vice President Reese and Lehman Brothers. Mr. President, I will continue with an item from the chief executive officer, and I'll begin with one other matter. This item does require a vote, and it is: Adopt finding that pupils are nonresidents of the City of Chicago indebted to Chicago Public Schools for nonresident tuition. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow Board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with additional items from the board. These items do require a vote. The first report, Mr. President, is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Dan Coyne, tenured social worker assigned to Ray and Pershing East Elementary School. For the record, I would like to note that this report also adopts an opinion in order under separate cover. And I will continue with the second report. This is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. And for the record, President Clark, we will be taking a separate vote regarding the dismissal of Patrick Kelly, who is the engineer noted on that resolution shortly. So the next item is the third report, resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teacher. And for the record, I would like to note that on December 11, 2015, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss a probationary-appointed teacher pursuant to Board Rule 4-7B2B and 105ILCS5/34-84. His recommendation included the name of the teacher affected and the reason. He also noted that the teacher affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And I will continue with the fourth report. It's the resolution authorizing the honorable termination of regularly certified and appointed teacher. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow Board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now I will take a step back to note that instead of the engineer Patrick Kelly from Pressing School being dismissed, the board will now take a vote to proceed with a 30-day suspension without pay for Mr. Kelly. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
I think in this case, call the roll.
I will call the roll. Can we have a motion to move for the roll call vote, please? May I have a second?
Second.
I'll proceed with a roll call. Board Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Father Garanzini? And President Clark?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Mr. President, I will now continue with other items, and I believe that Board Member Furlong has a motion, please.
I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of November 18, 2015 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members review these minutes and determine that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed meeting held on November 18, 2015 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Father Garanzini?
President Clark?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays. And I believe that Board Member Ward has a motion, please.
Yes, I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of November 18, 2015, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Jordan Turner?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Father Garanzini?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Mr. President, I will now continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles in board reports appeared on the public agenda. And I will begin with RS1. Mr. President, I would like to note that RS1 has been revised, and the final will be in the action. And this item just needs to be accepted by the board, Mr. President.
Please mark "received" and "filed."
Thank you, Mr. President. We then have RS2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow Board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with the communications, and these items do not require a vote. CO1 is the communication regarding the board meeting of January 27, 2016. This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education, scheduled for Wednesday, January 27, 2016, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street, Garden Level Board Room. The board meeting will begin at 10:30. Public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org, or by calling the board office at 773-5531600. For the January 27, 2016 board meeting, due to the Martin Luther King Holiday, advance registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Tuesday, January 19, at 8:00 a.m. and will close on Monday, January 25, 5:00 p.m., or until all slots are filled. You can advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated in the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 speakers. Mr. President, the next communication is CO2, and this is the communication from the Chief Financial Officer concerning the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the Board for Fiscal Year 2015. And it reads, "The Office of the Chief Financial Officer has prepared the Fiscal Year 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Pursuant to Section 34-29 of the Illinois School Code, the Board retained the independent certified accounting firm of RSMUS LLP, formerly McGladrey &amp; Pullin LLP, to audit the basic financial statements of the Board as of and for fiscal year ended June 30, 2015. RSMUS LLP has completed the audit and issued an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements, which is included in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. In their unmodified opinion, RSMUS LLP has added emphasis on of matter for three items: the change in revenue recognition to 60 days from 30 days, the implementation of the new accounting standard for pension liability, and CPS's liquidity and future sustainability. Draft copies of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report have been distributed to the members of the board in advance of this meeting today. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is being presented to and accepted by the Board. The report will be filed in the official records of the Board and transmitted to the Mayor of the City of Chicago and the Chicago City Council, as required by law." Mr. President, I will now continue with additional items on the public agenda that require a vote, and I would like to note that we will be taking a separate vote on the Charter School Recommendation Board Report EX2 for CICS. So I'll proceed with EX1. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
Please, Madam Secretary, we just lost Dr. Heinz.
If I may note for the record, Dr. Heinz has left the meeting, and it is 3:06 p.m.
Can we, the question is, can we still apply the last favorable roll call vote, or do we have to take a separate vote?
We will take a separate vote, for that matter. If it is your pleasure, we can combine these two actions then.
Yeah, call the roll.
So we'll take a vote for both EX1 and EX2 for CICS? We'll do. So, Mr. President, EX1 does require a vote?